So we're now moving on to discussion item number four. This is the Harmony Grove Village South General Plan Amendment. Specific plan: Zone reclassification, tentative map, major use permit, site planning, environmental impact report, and associated documents. I know we have staff here to ask, to answer questions. I know we have a lot of public comment, which is why this one's time certain for one. Do we also have a staff presentation?
Yes, Chair, we do.
Great, okay. We'll begin with staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair Lawson Reamer and supervisors. I'm Angelica Trong with Planning and Development Services. Today, Ashley Smith and I will be presenting on item number four, which is the Harmony Grove Village South project. The project was approved by the Board of Supervisors in 2018, and as a result of litigation, needed to make revisions to the greenhouse gas emission mitigation measure and add an affordable housing component. The project has not changed since 2018, including design or number of the units. The department is before you today recommending approval of the project. The proposed project includes 453 single-family and multifamily dwelling units and 5,000 square feet of commercial and civic uses. Two miles of public multi-use trails and pathways traversing the community will provide recreational opportunities for a variety of users and will provide connectivity to the trails and pathways in Harmony Grove Village. The project also includes 34.8 acres of dedicated biological open space and four acres of public and private parks. The project is located south and east of the city of San Marcos and approximately one-third mile west of the city of Escondido. It is two miles west of Interstate 15 and two and one-quarter miles of State Route 78. Immediately to the north of the project site is a Harmony Grove Village project. The community of Elvin Forest is located west of the project site and the community of Eden Valley. The existing Del Diaz Highlands Preserve is located south of and adjacent to the project The project site is located within the Sandiguita Community Plan area. The site generally increases in elevation from the northern portion of the property to the southern portion of the property. The site is adjacent to residential uses of various densities and open space. Commercial and light industrial uses are located further south within the city of The project site is located in an area of North County close to the cities of Escondido and San Marcos, which provides public transportation, including Sprinter and bus routes. The Sprinter line, which is a 22-mile rail system connecting Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido, has a total of 15 stations along the Highway 78 corridor. One such station, the Nordal Road Sprinter Station, is located approximately two miles from the project site. Park-and-ride and bus services to the city of Vista, Cal State San Marcos, and Palomar College are available at the station. Several employers, including Palomar Medical Center and Cal State San Marcos, are located within two and a half miles of the project site. After the project was approved in 2018, a lawsuit was filed challenging the EIR. On February 2020, the trial court ruled the project's EIR violated CEQA. The trial court's decision was appealed, and on October 14, 2021, the Court of Appeal determined the EIR was adequate except for the greenhouse gas emission and a requirement that the project include affordable housing. On October 14, 2022, the Board of Supervisors rescinded the project approvals based on the court's order. Once a court has made a final decision on an issue, that decision is considered final and can't be argued again. This rule is called res judicata and helps the legal system be fair and efficient. It prevents bringing the same case over and over, which would cause delays and create confusion. The system is set up so everyone gets a chance to make their case, and after that, it's settled. Based on the rule of res judicata, the revised EIR of the project complies with CEQA and cannot be relitigated except on the grounds of current gas emissions. However, this EIR is separate from the board's discretion. Because the project was rescinded, the board has discretion to consider the merits of the project and decide whether to approve the project, deny the project, or request additional information or analysis. If the board decides to approve the project, the EIR has been revised to address the court ruling, and any future litigation will be limited to the changes made to the greenhouse gas emissions. As a result of the litigation, the project has revised its GHG mitigation measure. The revised mitigation measure requires the project offset 100% of the project's emissions locally within the county of San Diego. The project will achieve this by installing a solar panel system on existing commercial industrial building located in the county. The solar panel system will be capable of generating a total of 1,720 kilowatts, which will offset 100% of the project's emissions. In addition, the project will also provide, as a condition of approval, an affordable housing component that will include 10% of the project's total dwelling units as onsite affordable housing, consisting of 5% reserved as affordable for low-income households and 5% reserved as affordable for moderate-income households. Implementation of this condition will not result in changes to the project design or overall number of housing units.
Although the fire safety and evacuation analysis was upheld by the court and res judicata prevents the issue from being litigated again, most of the concerns raised by the community and stakeholders during the process were focused on fire safety, including: lack of secondary access, evacuation during the 2014 CoCo's Fire, updates to fire guidelines relative to secondary access and California Attorney General guidance relative to wildfire, potential changed conditions to an off-site dirt road called Johnston Road, new potential projects proposed for the north end of Country Club Drive and one on Harmony Grove Village Parkway. Per the state and county fire code, the maximum allowable dead-end road length is 800 feet. The dead-end road length of the project is approximately 4,200 feet. One means of mitigating an exceedance to the dead-end road length is providing a secondary access. Eight alternatives for secondary access were evaluated and determined to be infeasible due to various constraints, including topography, the presence of surrounding wildland fuels, and access rights. In 2018, the County Fire Protection District and Rancho Santa Fe Fire Protection District developed measures to address the lack of secondary access, including: providing a third travel lane on Country Club Drive from its intersection with Harmony Grove Road to the southernmost project entrance and within portions of the project so that no structure within the development will be more than 800 feet from having two travel lanes to egress; the three travel lanes will provide for two lanes of egress and one lane for emergency personnel ingress during an emergency; providing over seven times the number of required parking spaces and implementing a parking management plan to reduce the potential for roadway obstructions during an emergency; providing additional fuel modification beyond the code requirements; requiring fire-resistant construction for any non-habitable structures located within the fuel modification zones; doubling the minimum water supply requirements and exceeding the required fire hydrant spacing; constructing the community building as a temporary refuge or staging area, including a commercial fire sprinkler and alarm system, a diesel generator for backup power supply, and emergency supplies. With the implementation of these measures and features, the fire agencies found the modification to the code is in compliance with the intent and purpose of the code and that such modification does not lessen health, life, and fire safety requirements. The county and state fire code allow for the district to grant modifications and an exception to the fire code, provided they find that special individual reasons make the strict letter of the code impracticable and the modification is in compliance with the intent and purpose of the code, and that such modifications do not lessen health, life, and fire safety requirements. The 2014 CoCo's Fire burned 1,995 acres and destroyed over 40 structures in the community. The residents evacuating experienced long evacuation times. Within that context, the community has expressed concerns that the additional proposed population will increase the overall evacuation time, and the lack of secondary access poses a safety risk to existing and future residents. Emergency evacuations are often fluid, and the need for evacuations are determined by on-scene first responders or emergency response teams. The evacuation routes will be improved, and several other road improvements have been completed in the area since the CoCo's Fire, including the extension of Harmony Grove Village Parkway, a bridge leading to Citricato Parkway, the connection of Citricato Parkway from existing Citricato to Harmony Grove Village Parkway, and the completed Harmony Grove Village Road network. Since 2014, law enforcement and fire officials have implemented improvements to how they manage and conduct evacuations in an emergency, such as phasing emergency evacuations by neighborhood, thereby reducing large-scale traffic jams caused by vehicles entering the roads at once. A digital mapping system is also used by all emergency responders to allow consistency in response between agencies. An evacuation plan was prepared for the project and was reviewed by the Fire District and Sheriff's Office. The plan identifies the roads out of the community that could be used during an evacuation. Based on the analysis, there is adequate road capacity with the three lanes and new bridge to evacuate the project. If ordered, residents would be evacuated north onto Country Club Drive into the city of Escondido, or they would be sent east on Harmony Grove Road, Harmony Grove Village Parkway that connects to Citricato Parkway in the city that could take residents into industrial areas of Escondido near Palomar Hospital. Once inside the city, the lack of vegetation and urban environment would limit the risks to residents. Comments were also received stating the project relied on secondary access on Johnston Road, a private road located east of the project. While Johnston Road was one of eight options analyzed for secondary access, none of the eight options was feasible. As such, the project never relied on Johnston Road for secondary access, and it was not considered a part of the fire protection plan.
Concerns have also been raised regarding vehicle miles traveled. Case law has confirmed that a change to vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, is not new information that requires further analysis, and since the project has already been litigated, including the grounds of VMT, the issue of VMT has already been resolved by the courts and res judicata applies. Concerns have also been raised regarding new projects proposed in the area since 2018, stating that they would add wildfire and/or evacuation issues. Two of these projects, the Seguro Battery Energy Storage System project and the Solares Business Park project, are located at the north end of Country Club Drive. The other project is part of the build-out of the Harmony Grove Village community. However, there are new road improvements and changes in the fire environment that have occurred. Another fire emergency access road from Hill Valley Drive to La Moray Road within the city of San Marcos will be added by the Valiano project, providing an alternative route to the northern section of Country Club Drive. The La Moray connection is also located in the immediate vicinity of both the Seguro and Solares potential projects. For all three projects, if approved, the restrictive design and operational requirements would result in no significant and unmitigated impacts. If a project fails to meet safety requirements, the county could deny the project, and no effect would occur. No change to the project's analyses is required. As a result of the litigation, the project has revised the GHG mitigation measure and EIR to address the court ruling. The revised EIR was circulated for a 45-day public review period from August 22, 2024 to August 7, 2024. A total of 80 comment letters were received during the public review period. Staff responded to these comments, which are included within the final EIR. On April 5, 2018, the Sandiguita Community Planning Group recommended denial of the project based on conformance with the general plan, fire safety evaluation, road improvements, infrastructure, and compatibility with community character. On October 7, 2024, the Sandiguita Community Planning Group provided a letter during the public review period recommending denial and resubmitted their original comments from 2018. The group stated that their position remained the same since their original environmental impact report was decertified, and the county board of supervisors rescinded the project approval. On August 22, 2025, the planning commission recommended approval of the project. The board can take various actions on the project. Option one is for the board to approve the project and certify the EIR. Option two is to deny the project based on specific reasons like community character or density. Option three is to send the project back to staff for additional analysis and return to the board within a specified time period. The approval of the project would provide 453 new housing units, including 10% of the project's total dwelling units as onsite affordable housing. Additionally, the project will offset 100% of the project's GHG emissions by installing a solar panel system on an existing commercial industrial building located within the county of San Diego. Because the project complies with all relevant codes and regulations and the required findings can be made, the department concurs with the planning commission and recommends the board approves staff's recommendation. This concludes the presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions.
I know we have quite a bit of public comment, and we'll have time for a board discussion and additional questions to staff after public comment, but just wanted to create some time or space. I know supervisor Desmond had something to disclose, and then if any of my colleagues have some immediate questions, we could do that before we go to public comment. So go ahead, supervisor Desmond.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to disclose that I visited the site with the Planning and Development Services staff on September 11 of 2025. Thanks.
Thank you. I just have one question, because I have a lot of questions, but I want to wait to hear from the public. My only one question is, go back to the last slide. If you could just summarize, maybe this is a question for Davia, but feel free to share, click it to whoever, just why? Like what is the staff's, I know you walked through it, but just if you could distinctly summarize for us, like why? Why are you recommending approving the project?
Certainly, Chair. I can turn that over for a detailed response to the team, but one of the primary reasons has to do with the location of housing, and we could get into some of those specifics in terms of proximity to existing development, proximity to urban areas, Sprinter Station, and our goals in terms of housing and sustainability. I'll turn it to staff to talk about the variety of findings that they've identified.
Yeah, Chair, from a staff perspective, this is a good location for housing development. It is directly across the street from an existing master plant community, Harmony Grove Village. Project is approximately one mile from the city of Escondido, where there are services available, including shopping, groceries, a hospital. Also, about two miles from the nearest transit stop, it's just up Country Club Drive north. As you get closer to the 78, there's the Nordal Sprinter Station, which is in close proximity to the project site. And in terms of the staff analysis, you know, during the process, we had identified that the site actually meets the county's criteria to be considered an infill property. We had developed three specific criteria to identify infill development using kind of density, housing density, intersection density, and then proximity to jobs. It met and exceeded all three of those criteria, and I think for those reasons, staff is recommending approval of the project.
Thank you. I'm very interested to hear from the public. I know, I know, I've received huge amount of public outreach on this over the last, like, many months, probably longer. You know, I think there's a lot of concerns that I've heard about fire and fire safety and fire risk. I'm definitely going to want to better understand that. I also have gotten a huge amount of public input around housing and need for more housing and kind of a need for more middle-income housing in San Diego County and issues around the housing crisis. So just previewing for staff, I am going to have a lot of questions on these issues because this is a huge issue for my community. But we will, if there's another questions from any of my colleagues, we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We do have 91 total requests to speak, 67 individuals in person, 24 requesting to speak by phone, and nine group presentations. Also like to note for the record, we did receive 191 ecomments on this item. Two of those were in favor, 187 were in opposition, and none were neutral. Any individuals that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. We're going to go ahead and begin with the group presentations, those groups that are in favor. You will then, you will have 10 minutes to address the board. All three members of the groups must speak during that 10 minutes. Please self-regulate your time with the timer on the podium. Like to invite forward, the first group presentation includes the following individuals: John Becker, David Kovac, and Mike Huff. Just as a reminder, each group and each person in the group may speak for no more than four minutes. As you come forward, if you could please state your name at the podium before you While we're waiting, you can go ahead and state your name at the podium before you begin your presentation.
John Becker.
Michael Huff, mine is on video.
Thank you.
Chair Lawson Reamer and Board Supervisors, good afternoon. My name is John Becker. I'm a practicing landscape architect and land use planner with Bowman Consulting Group. Over my 40-year career here in San Diego County, I've experienced a lot of changes in the housing market, but none more critical than now. We know that housing is more than just walls and a roof. It's the foundation of stability, opportunity, community. Then, when San Diego working families can find a home they can afford, everything else becomes possible. Kids can focus on schools, parents can build careers, and neighbors can form lasting connections. That's why, to me, a community like Harmony Grove Village South is more than just a project. It's a promise to keep San Diego families here, give them stability, and create a village where people don't just live, they thrive. Here's how we'll deliver on that promise. First, jobs and fair wages. We're proud to bring the first residential labor agreement in San Diego County history. Partnerships with Local 89 of the Labor's International Union, LIONA, skilled union workers will build these homes, earning fair wages and, in some cases, having a chance to live in the very community they've helped create. Second, we'll provide housing that meets real needs. We'll build 45 affordable homes and more than 400 homes in the missing middle, serving families for whom neither McMansions or four-story apartments work for them. Our missing middle homes include cottages, farmhouses, bungalows, loft-style work options, and small row homes. These designs are human-scale, livable, and full of character, places where families can truly connect. Third, sustainability and climate leadership. Harmony Grove Village South will be a 100% net-zero energy community. Every home will include solar energy and EV charging stations, among many other features. The full program aligns with California's climate goals and shows that housing can be both forward-thinking and environmentally responsible. And finally, safe access and community connections. We're investing $10 million to build a new steel and concrete bridge over Escondido Creek, the heart of the village. Today, cars cross the creek on its bed, polluting water and leaving residents stranded during storms. Our bridge will restore the creek's ecological nature, provide year-round access, and include generous capacities for vehicles, pedestrians, cyclists, and even equestrians, especially critical in emergencies. Harmony Grove Village South creates jobs, delivers homes that families can afford, provides a safe and resilient infrastructure, and is exactly what we need right now to combat San Diego County's housing crisis. Thank you for your time.
And Michael Huff, again, I am with DUDAC, and I have a video that will play regarding the project's fire safety.
Chair Lawson Reamer, supervisors. My name is Michael Huff, Senior Director and Vice President at DUDAC. My team and I prepared the project's fire protection plan. Harmony Grove Village South is not Pacific Palisades, Altadena, or any other similar place with older, vulnerable structures, lack of maintained defensible space, or long, windy evacuation routes through wildlands. HGVS is a fire-hardened master planned community, is inclusive of ignition-resistant buildings and landscape, and it is a short distance to urban Escondido. This graphic summarizes the HGVS site and the key fire safety features. I'll point out a few highlights. A large, wide, three-travel lane bridge and three travel lanes into the project, site-wide and extended fuel modification, and code exceeding number of hydrants and redundant fire flow, amongst many others. Next, let's discuss the HGVS fire protection plan. The FPP is the most scrutinized and analyzed in my 33-year career. 16 experienced professionals from six organizations were involved with nearly 500 years of combined experience. This project had an intensive 360-degree review. The FPP is as valid today as it was in 2018. This is due to the lack of changed codes and site conditions, along with the very conservative approach taken by the original FPP, including for the granted code modification. The FPP is not reliant on the Johnston Road connection for evacuation. Johnston Road was included in the FPP as a potentially available road for some types of emergencies. However, it was not relied upon as secondary access. And lastly, the FPP was accepted by two fire agencies after years of analysis. Finally, the HGVS wildfire evacuation plan was evaluated by the same organizations and individuals who respond to and manage evacuations in the area, and it was deemed appropriate. It includes four fire and law enforcement-recognized available evacuation routes. It was confirmed by San Diego County Sheriff's Department when they stated their confidence to amass officers, control intersections, and move people the short distance to the concrete jungle. And it is inclusive of a contingency plan. Emergency managers can use HGVS for onsite sheltering for residents and for neighbors to the south and east. The project area road network has been significantly improved since the project was analyzed and approved in 2018. I'd point out specifically the proximity to the concrete jungle, the multiple routes to the east and north, and new routes that provide additional capacity and options, including Citrocato Parkway connection, which is now four lanes, two lanes in each direction, and La Marra Road northerly secondary access in the northern part of Eden Valley. In summary, the area's evacuation capacity, flexibility, and optionality is better now than it has ever been, and the HGVS fire-related issues have all been addressed. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Are you ready? Brian?
Chair Lawson Reamer, supervisors. My name is David Kovak. Chair Lawson Reamer, supervisors. My name is David Kovak, and I am the managing partner for Harmony Grove Village South. Today, I will offer two graphics and one essential question for your consideration. Graphic one, the county's fire protection plan for Harmony Grove Village South is the gold standard, built and vetted by a six-member team, four government agencies, and two independent firms specializing in wildfire safety. Together, they brought over 500 years of frontline wildfire experience. These are not mere consultants. They are the experts who write, enforce, and live by the California Fire Code. Their careers are defined by protecting communities from fires' worst destruction. It is nearly impossible to imagine a more qualified team to create and validate this plan. Let's review them quickly. Cal Fire, San Diego County Fire Authority, Rancho Santa Fe Fire Protection District, San Diego County Sheriffs, DUDAC, Rhodey and Associates. My question, supervisors, can we honestly imagine this team overlooking the absence of secondary access in the fire protection plan if it were truly required? And is it remotely possible this 500-year team failed to ensure evacuation standards not only met, but exceeded the fire code's intent when the plan was formally accepted? This 500-year team determined that the sum total of all fire protection plan, project design features, working together, met the intent of the fire code, especially regarding evacuation. Graphic two, this graphic summarizes the 11, yes, 11, formal public government reviews of the Harmony Grove Village South Fire Protection Plan by the county and state appellate court since 2018. Three key points here. One, in 2018, the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved the fire protection plan and Harmony Grove Village South. Two, in 2022, California's Fourth District Appellate Court decidedly confirmed the fire protection plan. And three, in 2025, PDS determined public comment offered nothing new or relevant to the fire protection plan. These 11 formal bodies have only confirmed the fire protection plan and that secondary access is not required or necessary. In closing, the opinion of a handful of private individuals who have opposed this project from the beginning is not remotely equivalent to the 11 government reviews that have occurred from 2018 to today. The essential conclusion of the fire protection plan has not changed since day one. Safe evacuation is not reliant on secondary access. This is a confirmation provided by these authorities from 2018 to the August unanimous planning commission approval. One, the 500-year team.
You have to shut off your presentation.
Two, the county of San Diego. Three, the state of California appellate court. And four, Rancho Santa Fe.
So that audible noise is your 10 minutes? In 10 minutes, the chair has, that's it? Okay, thank you. So we will go on to group number two. Susan Williams, oh, excuse me, sorry. The next group in support is group three. Kelvin Barrios. Le, uh, is it Leono?
Laono.
Laono? Sergio, I believe it's Machado. And my apologies for mispronouncing anyone's name. And then just again, all groups will have 10 minutes to address the board. All three members in the group must speak during that 10 minutes. Please self-regulate your time with the timer podium. And just as a reminder, each person in the group may speak for no more than four minutes, okay? And then if you could please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good afternoon Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Kelvin Barrios. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Labor's Local 89. I'm here today on behalf of our Business Manager, Valentin Macedo, and the nearly 5,000 union members we represent across San Diego County. We are proud to stand in support of the Harmony Grove Village South project. This project delivers nearly 500 new homes, including a meaningful share of affordable housing units, at a time when working families are struggling to find housing in the communities they helped build. Our union members, the people who will actually construct this community, don't just want to work here, they want to live here, raise families here, and build a future here. This project creates that opportunity. Housing plus good jobs equals real impact. Harmony Grove Village South includes a labor agreement, so it will be built with union labor. That means safe and high-quality construction, skilled workers who live locally, good wages that allow workers not just to build homes, but afford them. When our members are paid fairly, they put that money right back into the local economy, buying homes, supporting small businesses, and investing in their communities. This project is more than just housing. It provides for 35 acres of preserved open space, park trails, and community gardens. It also provides for a new bridge over Escondido Creek, modern infrastructure upgrades, net-zero energy homes, solar and EV-ready design. It's smart growth rooted in sustainability and equity. Supervisors, this is the kind of development we need more of, one that delivers housing opportunity and long-term community value. On behalf of the Labor's Local 89, I urge you to approve the Harmony Grove Village South project. Now I'd like to turn it over to my fellow union members to share what that project means to them.
Good afternoon Chair and supervisors. My name is Sergio Machado. I live in Chilavista and have been a proud union member for the last 36 years. Throughout my career, I primarily have worked on highways and freeways and also on vital infrastructures across San Diego County. While my work is not directly in houses, housing, I recognize that projects like Harmony Grove Village South create the communities connected by these roads. This project offers critical housing close to jobs and transportation, helping reduce long commutes for many workers. It also provides an opportunity for, for union labor to build a safe, well-constructed community that working families can afford to all call home. I strongly support this project.
Good afternoon Chair and supervisors. My name is Leonel Lucas. I live in Chilavista and I'm a proud member of Local 89 since 2004, that's 21 years. This project is not just another job site. This is change of, create community where working people can actually live. What make, what makes Harmony Grove Village South especially important is that currently the only housing project in San Diego County being permitted that includes onsite affordable housing. That means this development is delivering a real, accessible homes for working families. It has parks, trails, open space, and affordable homes. It's the kind of project that respects the workers, the environment, and the neighborhood. I support Harmony Grove Village South because it gives families like mine a better future. Thank you.
Sorry, I only had three people in the group. What's your name?
My name is Alfonso Sanchez. Good afternoon Chair and Supervisor. My name is Alfonso Sanchez. I live in Oceanside. I'm a proud member of Local 89 Labor Union for 38 years. In my decades in this trade, I've seen troubling trends. More and more workers are being pushed further away from San Diego County because they simply can't afford to live near the jobs that they work so hard to build. That means long commutes and missed family dinners. Harmony Grove South changes that. This project creates housing closer to the jobs, housing that our members can actually afford. That, it includes affordable units that are real, integrated, and accessible for the people who keep this county moving. And it's not just about homes, it's about quality of life. Less time on the freeways, more time with our families, less vehicle pollution, cleaner air, and the opportunity for working families to plant roots in a place they helped build. We, we support this project because it meets rigorous fire safety standards and building codes designed to protect this community in emergencies. That includes fire, well, well-planned evacuation routes, fire-resistant construction techniques and materials, inner structure improvements that meet or exceed county requirements for safety. This project has received, this project has received strong recommendations from the county staff and was unanimously approved by the planning commission. Because this meets these high standards, this is not a sprawl, this is planned and responsible development. It's a balance of open, open space and inner structure and the benefits, and the benefits working families. On behalf of myself, our union, and the workers who are ready to build and invest in this community, I respectfully ask you all to approve this program. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. And then we will go to group number four, Alonso Gonzalez, Jennifer Hernandez, and Kathleen Again, you'll have 10 minutes to address the board. All three members of the group must speak during that 10 minutes. Please self-regulate your time. And again, no one person can speak more than four minutes.
Great, thank you. Supervisors and county staff, Alonso Gonzalez with the San Diego.
Can we pause this time? There's, it's, should his, can his whole group come up?
Yeah, if your whole group could come up. Oh shit, yeah.
That's fine. I just wanted to have visual. Okay, you're good. She can stay. Sorry. I didn't even see her there. So she can, yeah. She can stay.
Whatever you'd like, yes.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you supervisors, county staff. Once again, Alonso Gonzalez with San Diego Housing Coalition, and I'm happy to be here in support of a project that we find to be a good example of two things that are lacking in our region. Gentle density and a product for the missing middle. We aren't the only ones who think so. We were really pleased with the response from the broader community when we asked that fundamental question, is this the type of new housing that we would like to see more of? The overly positive response is evident in the amount of engagement we received and the supportive letters you all received. To elaborate very briefly on those two key characteristics that we love to see, first, the defining characteristic of gentle density is a development that takes the next logical step and increasing density slightly. This type of development makes an effort to build upon a neighborhood's character and aesthetics. It is not out of place. The second feature, our favorite feature, is the diversity of the product. The homes that are being offered, the five different product types that include entry-level housing. So the 10% affordable housing component is great. It's especially great for those families fortunate enough to be selected for these in-demand homes, but we are also very pleased with the 90% of homes that will be offered at market rates, but include attached, detached homes with smaller and larger plans. Our position is that affordable, accessible housing is achieved regionally, not just by government subsidized affordability, but it largely comes from having a very diverse housing stock, from having and adding homes that include entry-level and multifamily homes. A diversity of housing options is what drives regional affordability. And this point of view got a major boost earlier this year when the Federal Reserve released a study concluding that construction of moderate-income market-rate homes is a principal factor for stabilizing rising prices, even for rental units. So in conclusion, we believe this project has been vetted and re-vetted by county staff, including county fire, and should earn your support.
Please pause the time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board Supervisors. I stand with three points that I would truly like to emphasize, and it has to do with black families. Forest homes cost $2,007 million and sit in a big lot. The result is neighbors in the neighborhood is 76% white, 5% Latino, and 2% Asian, and guess what? No blacks. Not one black family lives there. That is not to say, that is not my choice. It's because homes are too expensive and the policies block housing. Our mayor has emphasized all over having affordable housing for everybody, and everybody ought to be have the right to live. This is called redlining. This is called redlining. Years back, families were kept out of the neighborhood with redlining and discrimination. Today, it is happening, and new way through high prices and the rule stop middle-class income families to be able to purchase and buy and live in the community. It keeps us out, and I'm begging you today that you would consider and allow and take my comments today, and I've come here with the resources. Please, please hear me today. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Nor. Jennifer Hernandez is out sick today. I'm going to queue up her video just a second.
That would be yielding time. You can't do that.
He has a video. It's her video.
Yeah, Jennifer Hernandez's video.
Yeah, that's yielding time. So we had another ask for that.
Even if it's the same individual who is listed?
If they're not here in person, it's considered yielding time.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, because he would be playing the comments.
Got it, okay. So that's not permitted. Apologies. Okay.
Do they have a third person? No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will go to our next group. And that is Group Number Five, Dave Sislak, Ruben and Debbie Dorsey. And just as a reminder, you'll have 10 minutes. No one person can speak more than four minutes. Thank you.
My name is Ruben Gahalva. I've spent over 50 years in public safety, beginning as a firefighter and ultimately serving as California State Fire Marshal and Director of CAL FIRE. I am the only person in California history to have hold both those positions. That gives me a unique perspective. Over my career, I responded to countless wildfires, including the 2007 fire siege here in Southern California. When 23 wildfires burned in seven counties, among them was the witch fire here in this very county. I had overall responsibility for the response, and under the California Master Mutual Aid Plan, we evacuated more people without incident than were evacuated for Hurricane Katrina. These experiences taught me two things. First, wildfires in California are inevitable. And second, with the right planning, construction, and community design, we can safely live in fire-prone areas. As state fire marshal, I formed a diverse coalition of environmentalists, scientists, builders, manufacturers, and fire service leaders. Together, we developed ignition-resistant construction standards for homes and communities in fire hazard severity zones. These standards became Chapter 7A of the California Building Code. Since its adoption in 2008, tens of thousands of homes have been built to these requirements. State data is clear, there has been no significant damage that has occurred within a master-planned community built to these standards. It is important to understand what CAL FIRE's fire hazard maps mean. They don't prohibit development. Instead, they identify where wildfire risks exist so that stronger standards can be applied, just as seismic hazard maps require earthquake-resistant construction in certain zones. We aren't saying don't build, we are saying build smarter. I have reviewed the Harmony Grove South Village project. Some have raised concerns about its design, specifically the modification to dead-end road length. Let me clarify, the FIRE code recognizes that not every project can meet every prescriptive requirement. That is why the code provides a process for modifications and alternatives. If a project can demonstrate that its approach is equally safe or safer, the fire authority has discretion to approve it. That's exactly what happened here. The HGVS project not only meets code, it exceeds requirements in several key areas. Its fire protection plan has been carefully reviewed by professionals who understand both the letter and the intent of the FIRE code. In my judgment, this is a community that is better, safer, and more resilient because of its design. Let me close by stressing this: The tragic wildfires losses that you hear about on the news are not coming from new, fire-hardened communities built to Chapter 7A. They are coming from older neighborhoods that remain vulnerable. The path forward is not to stop building in wildfire-prone areas, it is to continue building smarter, stronger, and safer. Madam Chair and members of the board, I know from firsthand experience why we have lost homes in the past. I also know that the standards that we have today work. The Harmony Grove Village South project reflects those lessons. It will provide a safe, fire-resilient community for its residents.
Sir, I'm stopping your time, but you're at your four minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Debbie Dorsey, and this is my statement.
My name is Steve Abbott. I'm a retired fire chief with 31 years of experience in fire and emergency medical services. In that time, I've served as a fire marshal, ship battalion chief, and strike team leader.
Is this permitted?
The constituent needs to provide substantial testimony. So if they're providing a piece of the video, I think it's acceptable. Defer to INGA or council. But we do have other constituents that play audio as they come up to speak during the meetings.
Right. So I do know you can play audio, kind of as supporting evidence when you're talking, but my understanding is that the primary person testifying has to be the person here in the board meeting. Is this correct?
Chairwoman, Lawson Reamer.
Ma'am, we're...
Let me just ask our attorney.
Yes, it's my understanding that the video, if the video is of a person speaking, it needs to be a person who's also here, present, or has filled out a speaker slip. I wasn't catching what the facts were here for this particular situation.
So to clarify, this is a group presentation. In a group presentation, they have 10 minutes. One person can speak up to four minutes. The other two have to speak. If all three people speak. And there's a video being played that is of an individual who is not here in this room. So...
COVID, that's why.
Okay. Totally appreciate that he didn't come and give us COVID, so thank you. So appreciate that. Unfortunately, I think our board's rules are not adaptive for the reality of the pandemic that we continue to face. So unfortunately, we will not be able to play that video. Am I correct?
You are correct, and that is actually what we have told the rest of the public. You are not the only group that has this issue, so, yeah.
Although I do think it is a good point, and perhaps we should petition the state of California for some different rules. But, okay.
We also have the teleconference option as well. They can call in.
Ah, that's a good note. So in the future, if there's anyone else here facing the same dilemma, people can call in. The issue is we can't play a video of them not being present, but you can teleconference in. Okay, go ahead.
Now that brings up the issue is that, again, this group is not going to have three full people, so if you, as long as you don't speak more than four minutes, okay, because she gave her testimony. Okay, thank you.
Please stay home. That's great. Chair Lawson Reamer, Supervisors, good afternoon. I'm Dave Sislak. I live in Supervisor Montgomery Steps District, and my office is in the Chair's district. But before I became a proud San Diegan, I was born and raised in Pacific Palisades. The house where I grew up was badly damaged inside and out by the January wildfires. Every other home on my street was completely destroyed. A lifetime of memories burned to the ground in a single night. And that's why I'm especially disappointed that this group of opponents are here today exploiting this tragedy. It's also why I'm proud to be part of the Harmony Grove Village South project because I know the difference between my hometown, which was filled with old houses like mine, all built in the 1950s, some 75 years ago, and new houses built with today's strict FIRE code standards. But you don't need to hear any more from me, and I'm going to keep this short, because much like the opponents, I've never been a firefighter, I've never been an incident commander. I am so glad you got to hear from an actual fire chief, a man who put his life on the line, safely evacuated communities. And as a reminder, Chief Gahalva is the former California State Fire Marshal and was the Director of CAL FIRE with oversight responsibilities statewide. I cannot imagine a person more uniquely qualified to share their perspective about building fire-safe housing and stopping tragedies like the one that my hometown endured. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then we will go to Group Number Nine, and that is Juan Zerato, Jose Rodello, Jason Biaz, and Ralph Velador. Again, you'll have 10 minutes to address the board. No one person can speak more than four minutes.
Hello, good evening, Chair and Supervisors. My name is Juan Zerato, and I'm a proud member of the Laborers' Union. I'm a supporter of the Harmony Grove Village South because it's not just creating housing, it's creating careers. With labor agreement in place, this project will bring apprenticeships, on-the-job training that opens the door for young people in our communities. For the next generation, this project means more than a job, it means a pathway to stability, skills, and homeownership. When we invest in union-built projects, we create long-term opportunity that goes beyond the bribery cutting. I ask you to approve the Harmony Grove Village South, and ask to invest in the future of local workers and their families. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jose Rodeo. I'm a proud member of La Yuna, Laborers International Union of North America, and I strongly support this project. This project delivers balance, growth, new homes for families, preserve open space, clean energy, and critical infrastructure, including a new bridge over Escondido Creek. This project provides much-needed affordable housing and creates good jobs for working families. It represents smart growth that strengthens our community. Let's build a better San Diego. I respectfully ask for the approval of this project. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Jason Biaz, proud member of Laborers International Union of North America for over 15 years. I fully support the Harmony Grove Village South because it creates housing close to where the jobs are. Right now, many of us spend hours on the road and sometimes caught in traffic. This is time we could be spending with our families, building our bond with our children and our spouses, assisting in the household duties, and being there as a father and husband. Less commuting means stronger families, cleaner air, and better quality of life for working people. That's what this project delivers. Please vote yes. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Board, Chair. My name is Ralph Velador, and I'm a member of the Laborers International Union of North America, speaking strong support of the Harmony Grove Village South project. There's been a lot of talk about fire safety, and that's valid, but the reality is that project has met the county's strict fire safety and building code standards, and it includes fire-resistant materials designed that go above and beyond. And because this project will be built by union hands, you know it'll be done right, safe, strong, and up to code. Let's build a community that's right, the right way, with quality of labor and safety at the core. And I just want to talk a little about something about why it's dear to my heart. These hands afforded me the opportunity to send all five of my kids to college with zero liability on them when they got out. I paid for it wholly because of good jobs, because of developers who brought opportunity to our community and gave us that opportunity to work and not be a strain on our community and not have to reach out and get welfare or lean on the tax base in order to support us. We don't ask for handouts, we ask for opportunities. And when people come into our community and offer that, we need to go ahead and take that and let us know that you support us as working people in this community. We pay taxes, we have mortgages, our kids go to school here, we want to stay living here. Thank you.
All right. That concludes the groups in support. So now we will go to the groups in opposition, and that first group that is up now is Group Two, which consists of Susan Williams, Jim Mankur, Mike Stapley, and Rick Bannister. And then again, you'll have 10 minutes to address the board. No one person can speak more than four minutes.
Good afternoon. Let me get this right here. Good afternoon, Chair, Lawson Reamer, and Supervisors and County Staff. My name is Susan Williams. I have lived in Harmony Grove Village since 2016, and I am a proud member of the San Diego Community Planning Group, where I've served since 2017. Our Chair, Doug Dill, had planned to be here today to speak, but unfortunately, he is ill and unable to attend. He did, however, submit his comments for the record, and I want to note, as the graphic had showed previously, that the San Diego Planning Group twice voted unanimously to recommend denial of the project as presented. I am speaking today as the President of the Harmony Grove Village Homeowners Association. We are a neighborhood of 736 single-family homes filled with families, children, and neighbors who truly care about the community. I am honored to represent them. I want to be very clear, we are not opposed to new houses. Heck, we live in a new development. We believe new homes have their place, but they must be built responsibly with full recognition of the geography and the topography and all the risks. Also, to be clear, the proposed housing development stated as attainable housing, the reality is 90% of those homes will be at market rate, and if it's compared to the construction and the housing products of Harmony Grove Village, we offer everything from right around 1,900 square feet up to 4,400 square feet homes. Our prices go from just under a million to about 2.5 million. So that is at today's market rate. So by the time this new housing development would be built, we would assume that those prices would increase because that seems to be the trend. So for the lucky 10% of the people that get to be in the attainable housing, that's just a small percentage. So just to be clear, the rest of it is market rate. Excuse me, let's see. When my family moved into Harmony Grove Village, we were drawn to the beauty of the land and the strength of the community. From the very beginning, we understood the reality of living in a high-fire severity zone. Fire safety shapes how we live. Our HOA rules, our landscaping, the plants that we are allowed to grow, we take very seriously because we know what's at stake. The memory of the 2014 CoCo's fire still looms large. That fire forced evacuations that took some of the legacy residents with their livestock more than 2.5 hours, using the same narrow two-lane roads that we still rely on today. And that was before Harmony Grove Village was built and before 736 families and more than 1,500 new residents joined the area. Harmony Grove is not Delmar Heights. It's not Forest Ranch, it's not Rancho Peneosquitos. This is a narrow valley surrounded by steep terrain with one way in and one way out, placing a high-density project here would endanger not only the future residents of the project but also every family in Harmony Grove, Elvin Forest, and Harmony Grove Legacy. In an emergency, evacuation is not abstract, it's life or death. We've all seen the fires in Northern California and Los Angeles. These disasters are not rare anymore, they're becoming more frequent... These disasters are not rare anymore, they're becoming more frequent, more intense, and more deadly. To add hundreds of people to a cul-de-sac community with no secondary access is knowingly to increase the fire danger. Even widening the small stretch of road to three-lane roads won't serve the fundamental problem.
I'm pausing your time, but you're at your four minutes.
Oh.
So you'll have to, yeah, the next person in the group needs to speak now.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay.
My name is Rick Bannister, I'm also on the Board of Harmony Grove Village. We have passed a resolution opposing this, incidentally, and the reason is real simple. It's not that we don't want new neighbors, we love new neighbors, neighbors are good. The problem is, and jobs are good, and short commutes are good, and all these things are good, the problem is this subdivision is in the worst possible place in San Diego County that you could put it. It's at the end of a valley with one road to the north that's got a population of 200 horses going north to Highway 78. Fire Chief, at a meeting we had a couple weeks ago, Fire Station Six said, "That's off limits, we're not to go up that road, we're supposed to go out to Central Cato on Harmony Grove Village Parkway." That's a two-lane street. You're going to have two lanes coming out of the development itself, plus a third lane for truck trucks. They're going to dump into the two-lane road that surrounds this little mountain, taking us into it here, and there's another two-lane road next to the tinderbox that is Escondido Creek, so nobody dares go through there. And it's going to end up at the little bridge over Escondido Creek on Harmony Grove Village Parkway, onto a two-lane street that's surrounded by eucalyptus trees that are about 15 yards off the street. Eucalyptus trees don't burn, they explode, they're full of oil. Those things are going to be going up like crazy. I sent an email to the fire department, the appropriate person I was told to a couple weeks ago, nobody got back to me on that. Basically, we have a fire trap there, and no amount of quality housing is going to prevent those people from dying in their cars, because you're going to have 1,200 cars all trying to go down the two-lane stretch of Harmony Grove to get out, and they're not going to make it. I have seen approvals by the fire department, who is going to be collecting revenue in the form of taxes from those new houses, that's how they're going to pay for Fire Station Five. Okay? So they kind of have an interest in bringing more homes into the neighborhood. The problem is, the fire chief, in a meeting we had a couple weeks ago, says he can't defend us, he can't guarantee. He's going to try, he's going to do his best, he was asked to do his job, he says, "Yeah, I'll do a good job," but he can't guarantee. There's chappelle. Have everybody seen the project? All the supervisors? Tara, have you seen it? Sorry.
I know where it is, but I've not gone to visit the site.
Yeah, I wish you had. It's at the end of this long valley, and it's a disaster.
That's what I'm saying, I know, I've driven by it, but I haven't been into the site.
Okay, okay. All right. By the way, nobody's going to be able to get insurance on the houses there either. We're all having our insurance canceled, and boom, it's going to be a bunch of empty houses there.
Afternoon, Board. My name is Michael Stapley, I'm a member of the HOA at Harmony Grove Village. Harmony Grove Village was, like you said earlier, it was approved in 2018. Different Board, I don't know why you guys would want to marry yourselves to their poor decision. Like, new Board, make your own decisions. Adding a development of 435 homes and what is designated a very high-fire area doesn't make any sense. Plus, the county already permitted 75% of the new homes the state called for an unincorporated area by 2029. So not approving this project won't take you off track, you're well ahead of schedule of meeting the state's goal. Thank you.
Afternoon, Supervisors, Chair, good to see you. My name is Jim Mankur. For the last 13 years, I've worked for the CSAC Finance Corporation, and I've traveled up and down the state with your colleagues after fires, driving through areas that have been burned, and looking in the faces of your colleagues and supervisors as they have dealt with the aftermath of problematic building and escape routes. My sense of those situations, whether it's Sonoma, or Napa, or Paradise, or wherever these fires have come up, has been the lack of ability to remove people from areas when there's a fire event. And I know we've heard a lot about all of the opportunities and all the things that we've done to mitigate some of that, and I've heard some really great words, and I want to tell you, we are for building, we are for housing, we are for jobs, and we're for neighbors, but we want to do it in a safe way. I want to see, and we want to see, not just enough measures to make it or meet a certain standard, we want more than enough measures, so that we can be completely confident when and if Harmony Grove South goes through, that there's plenty of access to remove people from those situations, because I'm pretty sure we're not going to get shelter in place, even though we live in great houses right now that are fireproofed and wonderfully built. We're not going to get shelter in place, we're going to get evacuation orders, and when that happens, all of those vehicles leaving at the same time will not be able to do that in a safe and meaningful way. So I ask you this in advance of your vote, to say no, or to say revise it, so that when I look at you down the road, that you don't have the same look of some of your colleagues as they were trying to deal and dig out of what happened in their communities. Thank you very much.
So first of all, I just want to thank everyone in general for being incredibly respectful in a really difficult issue today. So thank you. I just do want to remind everyone that the rules of our chamber is no clapping. I know that most of you aren't here every single day, so you probably didn't know that, but just moving forward, let's make sure that we don't clap. You can actually snap, that's okay, you can twinkle, that's also okay, but no clamp, no clapping, or stamping feet, or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go to Group Number Six, that consists of John McMeekin, Nancy Reed, Leo Zilman, and I have an alternate, Shane Lauderdale. I'm not sure if Shane is also going to speak or not. And then just again, a reminder, you have 10 minutes, no one person can speak more than four minutes. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, just a moment.
Okay, no problem. Yeah, Jason will come and help assist you.
Thank you. I am Nancy Reed, I am Vice Chair of the Elfin Forest Harmony Grove Fire Safe Council, and for the past two years, we have been working closely with CAL FIRE on a sustainable fuels reduction program focused on protecting our beloved communities from wildfire. We call it the GOAT Grant. For days, I have been sending you pages and pages of stuff from my deep dive into the campfire, and how the lessons learned have not been included in Harmony Grove Village South. The parallels between it are really disturbing. In 2018, the campfire leveled Paradise and its neighbors, Concow and Megalia. Seven years later, it is still the most destructive and deadly wildfire in state history. Parallels, one. Known inadequate evacuation routes and capacity. Topography, narrow canyons that compress and enhance Santa Ana winds. Massive fuel loads. A changed climate. Increased temps, prolonged and severe droughts. Combine those last two, they reduce plant moisture, setting up the perfect storm for a massive, fast-moving firestorm. And Paradise had been warned that it had inadequate evacuation routes and capacities, but they went on a road diet, and they actually removed lanes from their evacuation routes. Harmony Grove Village South Fire Protection Plan is deeply flawed, with old and outdated technology and data. The main evacuation routes of Country Club and Harmony Grove Road are today inadequate for the existing residents, and you want to add over 450 new households? Harmony Grove Village South has only one access, and it goes over a creek with a massive fuel load in it that crosses a canyon that energizes Santa Ana winds. We are living in a new era of wildfires. They are explosive, they are massive, they are brutally fast, and they are uncontrollable. They kill and destroy indiscriminately. Gale-force winds cast a storm of embers miles from the fire line, and those embers will take down anything they can invade. We do not have enough heroic first responders, we do not have enough fire trucks or water to stop these monsters. The lesson of our '03 and '07 fires, they've been lost, but the lessons of the campfire in Paradise do not need to go unlearned. You, you can choose to follow the path of destruction that the leaders of Paradise chose, or you can choose to honor the lessons of Paradise, Camp, Tubbs, Carr, Dixie, North Complex, Palisades, and Eaton Fires. You can recognize that change has already come. People have died, tens of thousands of homes have been destroyed, and millions of acres have been burned. You can stop and choose to stop the madness. Please vote no on Harmony Grove Village South. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Lawson Reamer and respected Supervisors. My name is John McMeekin, and I am the Treasurer of the Elfin Forest Harmony Grove Fire Safe Council. Today, I am here to urge you to reject the Harmony Grove Village South Development Project. Over the past eight months, we have conducted topographic biomass mapping of the Escondido Creek Corridor, specifically through the Santa Lejo Canyon as part of the SEQA documentation required by CAL FIRE for our fuel reduction project, and the findings are clear and alarming. The creek bed contains continuous flammable vegetation, there are oaks, willows, eucalyptus, sycamore, lilac, sumac, sage, et cetera and so forth. The narrowing of the canyon near Harmony Grove funnels wind, increasing ember cast and fire spread velocity. The area lacks sufficient evacuation routes. The current modeling does not reflect full build-out or traffic volumes from all the neighboring traffic. And the homeless encampments that are east of the site increase ignition risks in this high-fuel zone. These conditions mirror those that fueled the Cedar Fire in 2003, and they're not isolated. The Harmony Grove Fire in '96 and the CoCos Fire in 2014 burned within or adjacent to this same footprint. Emergency services struggled to respond then and would very likely be overwhelmed again. The developer's fire protection plan relies on outdated modeling in 2017 and from before. It doesn't account for climate-driven changes in wind speed, fuel load, or vegetation health. It ignores the fact that evacuation from Harmony Grove could take over seven hours, and that's not a planning flyer, it's a life-threatening oversight. This area is designated as very high-fire hazard severity zone, and approving more development here without current modern modeling and additional evacuation infrastructure is reckless. I respectfully, again, ask you to prioritize public safety and reject this proposal. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Board and Chair. My name is Leo Zilman, I am the CEO of Ladris Technologies. Ladris is the foremost evacuation modeling authority used by over 40 agencies across eight states in the Western US, including at least 15 of California's counties. We also have with us here today Chief Lauderdale, who was formerly the Fire Chief of Chico, and served on many Type 1 incident management teams, including those sent to the CoCos Fire, as well as some of the largest fires in California's history. The presentation you're going to see today, and the model on the screen right there, is a model that has been vetted by some of the senior experts in the history of the fire service in California, including the former region leadership for CAL FIRE. This is a vetted model. Looking at this here, what it shows is a wildfire starting just south of the freeway and threatening Harmony Grove. Within 41 minutes, we can see it threatening structures, these are these purple dots. Note that the fire isn't suppressed, right, so suppression can affect this, but if it's burning over toward these communities within 41 minutes, you have evacuation gridlock that fast, and that assumes an evacuation order is issued immediately. So again, three and a half hours, that's what we're looking at today for an evacuation, using very conservative assumptions. All routes open to the east, all routes open to the north, northeast winds, 40 mile an hour, very typical fire start, not an extreme scenario. This could happen today. Looking ahead, you can see the full extent of the fire as it grows. If we are to go ahead and build this new development, you can see the evacuation times get worse, unsurprisingly, right? We're putting about another 500 units and about 1,000 more cars on the road, it's going to make the evacuation times worse, unsurprisingly. And again, we can see, you know, within 40 minutes, you have structures threatened, presumably you have an evacuation order given, and those red lines represent people not moving in their cars on the road, trapped as the fire passes over the roads. So watching the spread here, freezing it right there, the fire is over the roads without suppression, people are stuck in their cars. Watching this continue, by about the two-hour mark, you still have several hundred people waiting to reach safety, and they're still in their cars, and the fire is now over the roads without suppression. And again, this is a fire that could happen, this is not an extreme fire scenario, it's very typical. The fact of the matter is, you know, Harmony Grove exists today is a poor evacuation scenario, just factually, and it gets worse.
I'm going to pause your time, because you've got 20 seconds left, disconfirming Shane, you're not speaking in this group?
That's correct.
Shane is not, okay, thank you.
Yeah, put simply, you know, a new development by itself isn't bad, but the fact of the matter is, this is a very poor evacuation scenario today, and it is materially worse, you know, with another 500 units. Thank you for your time.
All right. We will go to Group Number Seven, that consists of Lisa Ross, Ron Asklin, and Michael King. Again, you'll have 10 minutes for the group presentation, and then what, no more than four minutes per person? Or, one person cannot speak more than four minutes, sorry.
Got it.
Should have that down now, how many times I've said it.
Pretty much so. Good afternoon, Supervisors. Back again, representing Sierra Club, San Diego Chapter, I'm Lisa Ross, I'm the Chair. Thank you for putting up the slides. I'm here on behalf of our 12,000 members in San Diego and Imperial Counties, and we're urging you to reject the project. This project is textbook urban sprawl, not infill development, in a very high-fire-risk area that would generate high VMTs in direct contradiction of the alternative selected by the Board in adopting the county's 2024 Climate Action Plan cap. A general plan amendment is a privilege for which there must be overriding public benefit, which does not exist for this project. You are in possession of our letter from our attorney, the Chatten Brown Law Group, that outlines our objections. I want to say, though, on a personal note, just sitting here, my family, my kids lost their home in Altadena, one of the most diverse neighborhoods in Southern California.
their home in Altadena, one of the most diverse neighborhoods in Southern California. Lives were lost on their street. As reported in the Los Angeles Times, 133-page study by the county indicated a colossal breakdown in agency functioning during that entire exercise. So to dismiss the idea of at least a minimum secondary evacuation route as unnecessary is a naive and perhaps cynical abrogation of responsibility to protect the residents who are sitting in here today. Turn this over now to Ron Asklin, and you can go through the...
Hi, would you mind going to slide four? Good afternoon, Supervisor Lawson Reimer and the rest of the supervisors. I'm Dr. Ronald Asklin, Conservation Chair of the San Diego Sierra Club. A new EIR is required for Harmony Grove Village South. Due to the Court of Appeals mandate, the project approvals were overturned, and the entirety of the EIR was wholly decertified. As Sierra Club previously raised in its October 7, 2024 comments, the entire EIR was decertified, not just the GHG section. The FEIR repeatedly tries to argue that only Chapter 2.7, the FEIR's GHG chapter, was recirculated for public review, and that all other issues had been litigated and fully resolved, allegedly precluding the need for further analysis. The appellate court expressly concluded that the GHG emission mitigation measure is intertwined with EIR, and as Sierra Club states, upon reexamination of mitigation measure M-GHG-1, the county may conclude additional alternatives are feasible or must be analyzed. The court's ruling was clear in that it denied the possibility of severing the deficient mitigation from the remainder of the EIR as the deficiencies were pervasive. Res judicata does not apply. The board conflicts, the project conflicts with the fire-safe and VMP-efficient smart growth alternative selected by the board in its adoption of the county's 2024 Climate Action Plan. This project is located within both a very high-fire hazard zone and a high-VMP area. In the six years since the project's illegal approval, the state has mandated new methodology for calculating transportation impacts. The Attorney General has recommended new guidance for development in fire-prone areas. The board committed to lowering VMP in the county, and the county's own thresholds for screening the severity of transportation impacts, which this project relies upon, have been invalidated. Yet, the FEIR insists that these concerns are of no relevance, arguing instead that somehow these changes fall within the scope of the initial environmental review of the 2018 FEIR. Please deny this project.
Slide please. Good afternoon, Chair Lawson Reimer and supervisors. My name is Michael King, and I am the North County Conservation Organizer for the Sierra Club of San Diego. California law is clear: Since 2020, transportation impacts must be measured by vehicle miles traveled. This project sits in one of the county's highest VMT areas, and the county's own screening map confirms it does not qualify for exemption. Courts have already struck down the infill thresholds developers have tried to use to avoid real analysis. Approving this project would lock residents into long commutes and congested streets, directly undermining both the county's climate action plan and the state's mandate to reduce per capita VMT. Additionally, this development borders 15,000 acres of undeveloped chaparral land. Calling Harmony Grove "infill" is simply inaccurate and renders the term meaningless. Next slide, please. The project would also pave over sensitive rural lands that support threatened species, including the Hermes Cooper Butterfly and the Western Spadefoot Toad. Both are already in decline as open space disappears. Additionally, this is a priority conservation area under the draft North County Plan, Multi-Species Conservation Plan. This development would fragment habitat, heighten wildfire risk, and push people and wildlife into fire-prone terrain. The mitigation measures are unworkable as well. Once habitat is paved over and fragmented, it cannot truly be replaced. Harmony Grove Village South is neither infill nor sustainable growth. It is high-VMT sprawl that destroys habitat, increases wildfire danger, and undermines climate goals. Next slide, please. To underscore this, this development is entirely discretionary. Just because you can approve does not mean that you should. We respectfully urge you to deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our final group. That group is number eight, and that consists of JP Therberg, Scott Sutherland, and Tamara Stewart. My apologies. Again, you'll have 10 minutes. No, one person can speak more than four minutes.
All right, I need that cable.
Jason, thank you.
So we have a video that we're going to play. I'm going to kick it off, and then my folks will kick off the remainder of the video. Okay. Oh, this side.
And just confirming, it's not like the other groups where it's not, it's a person speaking.
I'm sorry?
We're not going to get into the yielding time issue. It's not a video of another person.
We put this video together, and the person is me, is in the video.
Perfect.
Yeah. So, all right. And yes, and first of all, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity, and I want to thank the staff for being so open and transparent and available to listen to the community's needs. I really do appreciate that. So let me go ahead and press play on this.
And if you can introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is JP Therberg. I'm on the Elfin Forest Harmony Grove Town Council, and I did want to address one thing that was mentioned earlier before I start this.
My apologies, we got to start your time.
Yeah, oh yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. Here we go, JP.
Yes, of course. So earlier, a gentleman mentioned that there's never been seven, Chapter 7A homes, hardened homes burned down, and that's just not true. There was a study done by KNAPP, K-N-A-P-P, et al. It's in one of our letters. They looked at the Camp Fire, and they determined that 55% of the homes that were hardened, built after 2008, that were Chapter 7A homes, burned down, which is a much better than 90%. It's an improvement. It's supposed to help, but it doesn't mean that they're 100% safe. And I think that that's just not true, that these homes don't burn down. They do burn down, and especially when they're closer together, they burn down even more. And that's more predictive than actually the hardening itself. Being close to another house, which is what these subdivisions are, the fire spreads a lot easier. Anyways, so I just want to address that. So let's press play on the video. And, oops. Oh, and the audio, Hasta. Can you pause the audio? Because I need to fix the audio, sorry.
Your time is paused.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Oh my God, why won't it stop? Okay.
You should have your toolbar.
Oh, I see, we're on, I can't see my toolbar. All right, well, I don't know, it's, let me see if I unplug it and then, okay.
Where's your?
The toolbar is, I don't know.
You have it hidden?
No.
Settings, where's settings?
Let's go to sound settings. Okay. And then, sound is where, here, right? And then, output, Creston?
Yep.
Okay, there you go. So, okay, this should work. Let's see.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reimer and Board for the presenting, writing, and teaching today.
It would be on your end.
This community united in opposition to this project because of existential threat it poses to our safety.
I can't turn it up. On my end.
On your computer.
Yeah, it's all the way up.
Jason, do you want to?
We tested the video, I guess we didn't test the audio, huh?
Most of them were stated by the board on Monday.
Something's going on with the...
Written, 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 written emails, synopsis, synopsis, here, 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 here.
I have the video on, on a thumb drive.
Potentially lose money.
I have it on a thumb drive. Kill it and attach your thumb drive.
No, it's not the front...
It's actually one of the oldest communities in the county.
It's playing on the computer.
It was founded by the Harmony Grove Spiritualist Association.
Yes, I don't know why that's happening. It has to do with this, I think.
No, that's, you need that. Go ahead and plug it in here. Do you have a USB on that side?
Yeah. Okay, and then... Yeah, right? Sorry about that. I mean, it's not a question of the video. The video is on the hard drive, so it should be faster, right?
You would think.
Okay, thumb drive. Okay.
It's actually one of the oldest communities in the county.
Something going on here. Can I, maybe we can play it off?
Be here, 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 at the hearing, wearing, to take off, and have childcare, make, potentially lose money.
Good Lord. Apologies, it was working fine last night at 2:00 in the morning. See, it works now, but...
If we can't get the video to work, I mean, hopefully we can get it to work, but...
Yes.
Possibly you could play the video with no audio and then talk, so we could...
Yes, we could do that if that were the...
So we could see the video but hear you.
We thought it'd be easier just to record it, and apparently it's not easier, so apologize for that. Oh, gosh, okay, well, then, we'll just have to read it out loud. We have a script, I guess. Let's try this again.
These communities have always been united, not because of our craft...
There's something going on here. Okay, well, then, let's just, I guess we'll have to do Plan B.
...like the Fourth of July, 8, 50 years in running, keeping it...
Why don't you turn the volume off, and then you can speak while we can look at here?
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reimer and Board for the...
Why is it not, I can't turn the volume off? Okay, hold on a second.
Like, this community is united in opposition...
Sorry. Where'd it go? I'll have to find it again. Okay.
...survived at least one wildfire, and many residents, especially in Harmony Grove...
Just because it's playing for the Creston system.
The backbone of this community is the fact we live in one of the most fire-prone areas of the county.
Yeah, but there's no control over the audio, the volume.
...citizens, it's little value...
All right, well, we have the video, so maybe, is there any way to turn the volume down on the Creston, on the, your overhead?
You can mute your mic.
Oh, maybe that's what it is.
Like, JP, you're pretty loud. Maybe you could mute your, mute your mic and talk loud? Is that possible?
Yeah, the only, my only concern is the public watching on TV may not hear it.
Oh, the public, yeah, the public needs to hear you on television.
All right. So let's just start then, I apologize, you know, this was supposed to work. Thank you, Chair Lawson Reimer and Board members, for listening to the community's voice. We're here on behalf of the Town Council, representing, representing the community of Harmony Grove, as well as other rural communities in the valley. We've created a little video for you to share, to share with you. Thank you, Chair and Board. I'd like to point out that this community is united in opposition to this project because of the existential threat it poses to our safety. We've collected over 1,300 signatures. Most of them have been hand-signed, and they were delivered to Chair Lawson Reimer's office on Monday. The majority of the folks who signed were from Harmony Grove, Eden Valley, and Elfin Forest, not from other areas, and not paid to do this. We've also written at least 300 emails in opposition, and to be here at this hearing, people had to take time off from work, people had to, you know, get childcare, and it is difficult. And the change of time, obviously, we lost a few people along the way. A little bit about Harmony Grove, because Harmony Grove is, it's important that we're aware of what the location is, right? So, let's see here, since I'm playing this, here we go. So this is Harmony Grove, this is Harmony Grove Village. Harmony Grove Spiritualists was founded in 1890. They're still around, and their homes burned down during the CoCos Fire, which is adjacent to where the project is. Yeah, so we obviously enjoy the rural living, we enjoy living in an area that has some beauty, but also is very dangerous. The community itself is constant, under constant threat of fire. It's part of our DNA. Most of us have survived at least one wildfire, and many residents, especially in Harmony Grove, have survived several. We've actually lost, we've had a fatality. David Hammond, who was a father of two, died during the Harmony Grove Fire. The backbone of this community is the fact that we live in one of the most fire-prone areas of the county. The community's always supported, sorry, I'm going to go to the next thing. In case it isn't obvious, this valley is one of the most fire-prone areas of the county. There have been at least a major, at least a major 1,000-plus acre fire every decade, 1,000-plus acre fire every decade. Over the years, these wildfires have cost hundreds of homes and caused dozens of hectic evacuations. To understand why this is the case, you have to look at the topography, okay? This is just the video from Harmony Grove Fire. This was, this was one of the big fires in our community.
The backbone of this community is the fact we live in one of the most fire-prone areas of the county.
Yeah, so, the audio is still there, okay? So this is the Harmony Grove Fire, and this is the Del Dios Fire, which happened the year, the year right afterwards. They both overlapped the Harmony Grove area. We've had over, like I said, these are all the fires we've had in the last, whatever, 40 years, and like I said, one every, every, every few, you know, every, every 10 years we've had a 1,000-acre or plus fire. The most recent fire was 10 years ago, CoCos Fire. It changed, it changed direction very quickly. It came down into Harmony Grove very quickly, within 30 seconds.
Yeah, you're, you're...
I'm past my time.
Yeah.
So let me just give Scott this part, okay? Unfortunately, we would have done this on the video, but, okay.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Scott Sutherland, and the Chair of the Elfin Forest Harmony Grove Town Council. He's going to run the video while I read this. So since then, California has experienced unprecedented wildfire destruction: the Camp Fire, Tubbs Fire, Palisades Fire, and many more. Over 50,000 homes have been lost and hundreds of lives taken, often due to inadequate evacuation routes. In response, Sacramento passed SB 99, AB 747, and AB 2911, which mandate rigorous evacuation analysis and emphasize secondary access in high-risk areas requirement San Diego County has not yet applied. Back in 2018, our community requested a comprehensive evacuation study. The county refused, claiming CEQA didn't require it. The developer studied only their project residents and sidestepped the wider community impact. So we held fundraiser events to fund our own studies. Dr. Ron, in 2017, warned of catastrophic losses that were not only probable but likely. In 2024, Dr. Covey, using the developer's own data, found evacuation would take seven hours, ensuring entrapment under many fire scenarios. This year, we then sought reviews from leading wildfire scientists, all of whom agree with Covey's conclusions, submitted a joint opposition letter. And most recently, a wildfire modeling firm staffed by former CAL FIRE executives simulated a typical, not extreme, fire. Even with conservative assumptions, the model showed entrapment remains likely. Regarding the importance of the mythical Johnson Road emergency option, county staff changed their tune. The recent Planning Commission report notes neither the county nor the court considered potential use as the critical factor in an emergency. Still, they mentioned it in their 2018 staff report as an evacuation option. It shows up in the Fire Protection Plan on page 40, under Integral Components to the Safety Plan. It shows up in the EIR under mitigations. It is referenced in the developer's own appellate court filings, in their oral arguments to the court, and ultimately, the appellate court referenced it in their ruling. For something that is not relied upon, it sure does show up in a lot of records. Thank you.
This part, right?
Yeah. Yeah, there you go.
Hello, I'm Tamara Stewart. I'm a resident of Elfin Forest. I'm just going to continue on reading here. So, the Fire Chief for this project himself has admittedly publicly, if this project came through today, it would not pass without secondary access. He doubled down when he attempted to revisit his statement in a written response. He acknowledged that, quote, "The Fire District did not review or provide any further input to the county based on the direction given." That's right, the county staff instructed him, and I quote, "That no additional input was needed." You can ask him if he thinks the project is safe under the latest safety standards from today. He cannot rightfully answer with certainty because he himself said he did not review the plans. Retired fire chiefs, law enforcement leaders, wildfire evacuation experts, and other first responders who have managed evacuations in our region's largest fires, current professionals with decades of experience, have all stated that this... with decades of experience, have all stated that this project is a danger to the community. Twenty-five of the region's top environmentalist groups have also opposed this, this unsustainable sprawl project, and the community are just as opposed now as they were ten years ago, as witnessed by the hundreds of letters submitted and over thirteen hundred positions signed. Over the years, the Town Council and hundreds of volunteers have expended thousands of unpaid hours to advocate for our community. While the billionaire only had to write a few big, a few big checks, we sacrificed our personal lives, our careers, and families to fight this battle over a decade. Why? Because we are against housing? Remember, we supported a much bigger project right here in this room. No? Because when that next fire does come, none of us want on our conscience that we didn't do enough to prevent it. I ask you to dig deep, look at the information in front of you, and decide if you can live with yourselves should the unthinkable happen. And, speaking on behalf of my family, my wife and our four kids, I know you've lost people fighting these fires, we matter, like all, every single person in this room matters. There's no dollar amount that you can put on any one of these heads that would be okay. Life, you guys are talking about quality of life in this, and it's a great location, and this and that, well, well, life matters, and we're here, and our lives matter, you can't put a dollar amount of profit on any one of us, including yourselves, and everybody that you affect in your life. Like, we're people, we're here, keep us safe, please. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And that concludes the group presentation, so now we will move to the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows, there's two arrows down there, intel it's your turn to speak at the podium, that will help up, speed up the, the constituent speaking. Uh, since we have ten or more speakers, you will have one minute to address the board. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record, so I'll be calling groups and individuals of groups of three, so please listen for your name. First three speakers are Kendra Correa, Stephanie Rumsey, and Deborah O'Neil.
Hello, Kendra Correa, from Harmony Grove. San Diego Housing Coalition is, pardon me?
Uh, pull the mic down, yeah?
That's happened last time, okay, here we go.
There you go, perfect, thank you.
San Diego Housing Coalition is one of the only groups supporting Harmony Grove Village South. It, this organization also solicited signatures countywide in support of Harmony Grove Village South, presenting itself as a community backdoor organization. It turns out the founder, Jesus Cardenas, has been paid by the developer RCS since two thousand twenty-one, and according to La Presa, the group's website promotes it as a collective of community voices, organizations, educators, experts, nonprofits, lifelong advocates, and the group does not list the names of its staff, board members, or collaborators, and lists no phone number, no address, or contact information except for the admin email address. San Diego County records show the group is only a fictitious business name for the California Housing Coalition, a nonprofit filed with the state in two thousand twenty-one, using the address of Cardenas. The group's nonprofit status was revoked by the IRS, failing to fire file taxes nine ninety in, um, two thousand twenty-five.
That's your time, thank you. Next speaker.
Stephanie Rumsey, I moved here twelve months ago from Los Angeles, didn't know what I was getting myself into. Found out when we were closing on our house that we couldn't get fire insurance, I used the California Fair Plan, cost my husband and I ten thousand dollars a year, so I'm not sure about affordable housing. That fire starts east of the development, no one talked about this, everyone's gonna go down Elfin Forest Road into Santa Leo Hills. Forty-five acre fire, June twelfth, I was stuck in it, trying to come and evacuate early, I couldn't even make it to my house. We were all trying to inch over to let the fire department and the police officers get in, so no one's coming in, and we're not getting out, regardless, even if this development, like, happens, like, so, I just wanna make sure that you guys know, like, this is, like, not a study, like, I just saw it six months ago, that's why I'm here, I didn't know what I was getting into. Thanks.
And as the, as the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite forward Ron Ashman and John Dummer, Doomer, Dummer?
Dummer.
Dummer, thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak, my name is Debbie O'Neil, I live in Harmony Grove, rural. This fight against Harmony Grove Village South has been an eye-opening experience. I have now seen the negative side of government. I've seen how developers from, out of San Diego County have used donations to local candidates, our fire department, and the labor union to force their development through. They hired a lobbyist who started a housing nonprofit in an attempt to make it look like San Diegans want this development. They are paying people to be here. We're just a small community who have had to donate our own money, take time off of work, and learn all about fire codes and land use in order to fight a developer from Orange County and a billionaire from Colorado. However, I'm hoping today to see the best of government, the protection of the citizens from corporate greed. You can show this with a no vote against waiving fire codes, a no vote against entrapment and death, and a no vote against Harmony Grove Village South. Thank you for your time.
Chair, Board members, my name is Ron Ashman, I wonder if I could request two minutes, just so I don't run over?
No, we have the same amount for everyone.
Okay, I'm the Chairman of the County Land Use Planning Commission, and since you cannot spare the time, I will not spare my comments.
Next speaker, and then I'd like to invite forward Summer Light and Brenda Wright.
Yeah. Can I, can I just pause, sir?
Yes.
No, the man who's walking out.
Ron.
Mr. Ashman.
Ron Ashman.
Ron, are you representing yourself or the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission.
Okay, then you can come back. If you're speaking on your own behalf, you get a minute, but if you're speaking for the Planning Commission, you get, I think, five, is that correct?
It's Planning Groups, I don't know if it's Planning Commissions.
Planning Group. If you're speaking on the, if you're speaking on behalf of the Planning Group, you can have, I think it's three or five, which is.
It would be five, but this, those are community planning groups, this is the planning, this is the San Diego County Planning Commission.
If you're speaking on behalf of the planning, you're, tell us again, you're speaking on plan of your, of your county planning group, is that correct?
No.
Your commission.
Our planning commission.
Your planning commission. Our planning commission. Now I'm clear. Okay, yes, if you're speaking on behalf of our planning commission, you actually get three minutes.
No.
Yep, three minutes. I thought you were speaking on behalf of yourself, so you can actually have three minutes.
My name is Ron Ashman, I am the current Chair of the San Diego County Land Use Planning Commission. I'm a resident of District Two, oh, make that District Four, sorry, that can happen when people play out their district fantasies. It can undermine a sense of, long-term sense of community also. I'm here to share the experience of the August twenty-fifth hearing on the applications for Harmony Grove Village South. It was well-attended, we had twenty-plus speakers. Some applauded the creation of housing and jobs, most were preoccupied with secondary access. They were concerned for their location of their homes, they're concerned for their home insurance, for their roads. All had opportunity to share their ideas. The staff report provided detailed information, particularly regarding maps, plans, project details, previous approvals, lower court ruling on environmental disclosure, appellate court ruling, and concurrence with additional information mitigation commitments by the applicant. The Fire Chief spoke and mentioned the importance of the completion of the Citricado Parkway upgrade and other improvements in peer review. There was a motion to approve, a unanimous vote, five to zero, to approve and support the staff recommendation, noting location abutting the city of Escondido, it's reasonable for clustered housing type, and job access. I can actually see this becoming part of the city of Escondido in the future, or maybe the city of San Marcos are a little more ambitious. I've had projects of my own be swept up by those cities after the county approved them. The, uh, our need for housing is real, young people do not want to live in rentals. Our need for gainful employment is real, presuming, presuming we have reasonable access to raw This type of project provides a variety of fundings, as do all housing projects. The Planning Commission's job is to review facts, make findings, balance competing interests in pursuit of safety and community. This is the same project that was previously reviewed and approved. If you have any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Summer Light, I'm an Elfin Forest resident, and I know firsthand that our fire insurance is skyrocketing. I'd like to bring attention to the Fire Safe and VMT Efficient Smart Growth Alternative. It is a core component of the San Diego County Climate Action Plan that the Board of Supervisors adopted in September of twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. The plan aims to guide development towards urban areas away from wire, wildfire-prone areas. I would like to encourage the board to vote no, support smart growth where you put homes where people can afford fire insurance and get fire insurance, where people can live more safely, and where we don't unnecessarily burden our emergency response, resources. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jonathan Dummer, I live in, um, in, in Harmony Grove. I've actually, uh, first moved there with my family in nineteen sixty-two, I was part of a gang of kids that built a, a dopey house with their father, and, uh, my fa, my father has since passed, my sister, uh, lives there. I want to point out that, yes, there may be, this development is gonna be built to a higher standard, but I would suspect, even at that higher standard, there's gonna be a fairly high percentage of houses that will burn. But more importantly, to the folks that already live there, is the houses that we live in, which are at the end of the dead-end road, behind the development, that we'll be able to get out before, we don't live in such houses, we live in houses that were built from the twenties through the eighties. They aren't built to this standard, and yet, we're gonna be the last folks out of there. I think that the idea that somehow we don't exist is, 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 uh, it's terrible, we, we do exist, and I want you to think about the folks that already live there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. As the next speaker comes forward, I'd like to invite forward Marilyn Johnson Coslow, Kevin Barn, uh, Barnard.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board members. My name is Brenda Wright, I'm a, um, resident of Eden Valley. Please hear my words on behalf of my neighbors, our animals, and my one-hundred-and-one-year-old mother. I've lived here for decades, I've lived through the fires, and I've had to evacuate. I've seen what happens when people and animals can't make it out in time. This project doesn't reflect the reality that we live in today, it's based on outdated assumptions and ignores the hard truth, the reality that we live in today. When the next wildfire hits us, and it will, we will likely have to shelter in place when the extra thousand-plus cars are trying to evacuate. That's not safety, that's surrender. Please don't approve a project that puts our entire community at risk, including the new homes, the new, the new residents. We're counting on you for our safety. We're counting on you for our families. This is our lives. Thank you, from the bottom of our heart.
Next speaker, thank you.
Hello, my name is Marilyn Johnson Coslow, and I'm very happy to be here to talk to you today. Um, I am a resident of Harmony Grove, my community was the one that was destroyed in the CoCo's Fire. I went through the fire, my hope, my home survived, the rest of them didn't. I'm talking to you today because when we first came to talk about this project in two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen, the world, I think, has changed. It's much hotter, it's much drier, it's much scarier to get out in a fire. I have to say that I am disappointed. Oh, it's gonna be my time? Okay, is it my time?
I'm gonna pause your time, but there, there's actually a timer right down below, and you can.
Oh, and I have eight seconds?
Eight seconds, yes.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna stop on this, I really think that you need to go to the location and drive those roads. It's like Julian, but in a very small area. I'm sorry.
Thank you, no problem, thank you. And then as the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to call Mark Eicholt and April Bevins-Cooper.
Before you start, by time, quick announcement, progress are up three, nothing, bottom of the ninth. Uh, good afternoon, Supervisors, Kevin Bernard, Harmony Grove. Quick housekeeping point, uh, I, uh, live next to the project, I hold office with the Ranch Santa Fe Fire Protection District Board, so legally, I have a conflict, so I'm here on behalf of myself and my community. In two thousand two, I attended a series of community meetings with county planners to support a future for Harmony Grove. During that process, we discussed several options for future development. The planners gave us several options to consider, and after much discussion, the community unanimously opted to support Harmony Grove Village in the current location and configuration. The plan to extend Country Club Drive south to Del Dios Highway was canceled after County Parks and Recreation acquired Del Dios Highlands County Park in two thousand two, leading to the removal of that section of the road from the county's plans. It is a strong opinion that if the county was seriously considering dense development south of Escondido Creek on the Harmony Grove Village South property, this Country Club Drive extension should have remained in the plans and been built to accommodate increased traffic and emergency evacuation capacity to our pedestrian valley. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mark Eicholt, I belong with Harmony Grove Village. When I hear people with different agendas using data for different conclusions, I often fall back on what I know from personal experience. So, at Halloween, hundreds of people coming into Harmony Grove Village, and the backup is almost forty-five minutes to get out. During rush hour in the morning, the backup going to Citricado is over a half hour. When I think that now we're gonna have over a thousand vehicles evacuating, that to me says, as the data says, that we won't be able to get out effectively, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite Mary Chris and John Brophy.
Hello, I'm April Bevins-Cooper, I live on Mount Whitney, I'm representing eleven children between four months old and fourteen month, fourteen years old on Mount Whitney alone. Um, our neighborhood street has been hit by the CoCo's Fire, lost homes, um, in the past fires. Also, my neighbor, Nancy Goodrich, was in public safety for thirty years with two years as commanding officer of traffic and special events. She's also in opposition to the project, we could do to the density and the risk of not getting the access over the creek. Um, she also says local government staff, including public safety personnel, routinely review such proposals as the General Plan Amendment Request, and sometimes may not raise or press issues, including safety issues, as they don't want to be seen as stumbling blocks to perceived progress, blocks to perceived progress by not signing off on projects they believe elected officials want. Existing resident safety should not be jeopardized by unsuitable development due to political expeditiousness or potential future revenue for local government.
So to correct the things, my name, last name is not Chris, it's Cross.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Mary Cross, I'm a native San Diegan and a forty-two-year resident of Elfin Forest. More homes have been lost to wildfires in the last eight years than in any other period in California history. From two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty, two, twenty-two thousand five hundred homes were lost to wildfires, and thirty-eight percent have been rebuilt. In nineteen ninety-six, the Harmony Grove Fire burned four homes in Elfin Forest and a hundred and twenty homes in La Costa, I evacuated during that fire. Dense development in high-risk fire zones will burn more homes and cause more fatalities. Eleven years after the CoCo's Fire, the vast majority of thirty-six homes lost have not been rebuilt. Continuing to build in dense developments and high, high-fire risk zones is not sustainable or smart and will lead to higher insurance costs for all homeowners. We ask you to vote no and promote smart growth and save lives, not dense growth in our high-fire rural communities. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming up, I'd like to invite forward Terry, I believe it's Navaret Sarami, and Sandra. Sarami, and Sandra Barsh.
Hello, Chair and County Supervisors. My name is John Brophy. I have lived in Harmony Grove since 2021 with my wife and two young daughters. I'm opposed to the Harmony Grove South, excuse me, my voice is giving out now, due to the higher density of homes and lack of roadway infrastructure that will support the growth. I hope you consider this potential loss of life during a wildfire and vote no. We have a dear friend that lost their home near the Spiritual Center in the 2014 CoCos fire. She had a very difficult time getting out due to the lack of egress. Here we are 11 years later, talking about adding 400-plus homes to the same area. In Harmony Grove Village at Halloween, which was mentioned earlier, we get hundreds of people. I live on Trailblazer Lane. I gave out 1,200 pieces of candy last year at Halloween. To watch all these people leave Harmony Grove, it took an hour, hour and a half, easily. There was hundreds of people that came in from outside the county. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Terry Sarami. Thank you for letting me speak here today. We talk a lot about people, but let's not forget about the animals. Our pets, our livestock, our wildfire. In a fire, they can't drive away. They rely on us. But if we're stuck in a gridlock, if we're sheltering in place because we can't evacuate, they're left behind. This project doesn't just endanger human lives, it puts our animals at risk too. We've seen the heartbreaking images from past fires. Do we really want to repeat this? Let's make decisions that protect our community, not place it at greater risk, please.
Before you begin your comments, I'll go ahead and call the next couple speakers. Leon, I believe it's Kiesliff, and Dylan Noreen.
Hello, my name is Sandra Barsh, 18-year resident of Elfin Forest. I evacuated with my family and animals in 2007 and '14. It was both times a very traumatic and terrifying experience that you can only relate to if you've been through it. I don't know if any of you guys have been through an actual evacuation process. Last time, we could get out to Harmony Grove because none of the homes had been built there yet, and Lico Hills was already totally gridlocked. So I'm going to wear off my script real quickly, and just because I've heard all these great arguments for the new project, and I get that there are many reasons, and it might be a very safe community in itself, the new project, but our reality is, we're in Elfin Forest, and we're on a very narrow winding road out to the east and to the west, and we are going to be trapped in the next firestorm if you guys approve this project. And I really am begging you not to gamble with our lives and not to sacrifice all of us who came today.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Leon Kesselv. I am a student who goes to UCSD. I will be graduating next spring, and I would like to stay in the San Diego County once I graduate. However, it's very expensive to live here. Projects like Harmony Grove Village South can give a young individual like me the chance to afford housing in San Diego County. That's why I support this project. The argument for the project being a major fire risk is being exaggerated. Does that mean we need to stop building well-planned, community-driven housing? What we really need is better funding and managing deforestation in areas around housing communities, also having better fire management, including monitoring the dryness of the vegetation in the area instead of just stopping well-planned community development progress in its tracks, especially on the basis of events we cannot predict. But what we can do is put funding and effort in preventing it. I believe the benefits from the project will bring many benefits to our county, and I fully support the Harmony Grove Village South project. Thank you.
Thank you. And then calling again Dylan. Okay, not seeing Dylan in the board chamber. We'll go with allegedly Audra, Jay, and Jan Denny, and James McKim.
I'm Jan Denny, there's no Audra. Okey-dokey, thank you very much. My name is Jan Denny. I've lived in Elfin Forest with my family for 24 years, and in that time, we evacuated twice. Oh, and hello, supervisors, it's very nice to talk to you. I'm opposed to the development because of the 453 homes with no southbound egress to Del Dios Highway. I believe the real issues today are being conflated with a bevy of red herrings, at least during the beginning part of the presentations. It's not about whether we can tolerate new homes or whether those homes will be fire-safe, it's about the number of cars, about the traffic, and about getting everybody out safely. That is the real problem. The parcel for this project surrounded on three sides by mountains and brush. On the fourth side, the north side, it's 782 homes of Harmony Grove Village. So although this development has been defined in terms of the northern and eastern interface to Escondido, on the southern and western interface, it's wild land. The topography has been zoned for only a few dozen homes originally with GP 2020, which was why they only allowed a very small number of homes. Gosh, that went fast.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is James McKim. I live in Harmony Grove on Cordy Drive, in the existing neighborhood that is the most affected by this deficient fire protection plan. I served on the Harmony Grove, Elfin Forest Fire Department for 15 years, retiring as deputy chief. During that time, I worked several major fires in our community. The steep canyons and hillsides contribute to severe and unpredictable fire behavior. In the CoCos fire in 2014, it changed so quickly due to just a minor wind shift that in spite of being packed and prepared to evacuate, my family barely escaped with a wall of fire approaching the very road that is proposed as an access route. At that time, there was not a single fire department or law enforcement unit on scene coordinating any evacuation. It is my opinion, as a former firefighter and witness to many major fire events in Harmony Grove, that the addition of so many houses without the existence of a viable secondary access route will lead to entrapment. Please deny this project as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And as allegedly Audra is coming down, I'd like to invite forward Linda McKim and Jason Farr.
This is beyond negligent terror. This is going to be up to, I mean, this is in your community, and you haven't even gone there. It's funny that Jim has. And the propaganda that's being spewed, you are gambling with these people's lives, and you want to use the propaganda of, like, infill, and we got to build houses, but to sacrifice people's lives to do it, when there's no evacuation plan that would get the people out in a productive manner right now? And then adding, you know, a couple thousand people is very dangerous. So like, where are you going to draw a line? Are you going to protect the people? Are you going to go with the corporate interests and, you know, the people that you guys pay to come here and talk, right? And try and paint a picture and say that it's exaggerated fire risks? We've already seen people lose their lives and their homes because of things that you guys have done, that you're implementing now, that you're not willing to mitigate. So it'll be interesting to see what you do, Tara. It will be very telling for the people.
My name is Linda McKim, and I live in Harmony Grove on Cordy Drive. I am a 40-year resident of the community. During that time, I had experienced numerous wildfires, land fires that were in or threatened the area. I've had to evacuate at least six times, including once when I was pregnant with our first child. Evacuation is not a straightforward process, even if you are prepared. I know, I've been there, done that. It is stressful at best and can be scary, chaotic, and even deadly when exit routes get clogged with vehicles and choked with smoke. Just as before, when we and neighbors were raising our children, today we have new families with children of their own. All of their lives are at stake here. Adding 450 homes with the corresponding increase in population to a neighborhood that has a single egress leading to narrow county roads is a recipe for disaster. I implore you to vote no on this application as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person's coming down. I'd like to invite forward Gregory White and Stacy McLean.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason Farr. I live at the end of Cordy Drive, which borders this new development. I am not able to get a building permit on my home as it currently stands without the fire department's sign-off, unless I widen the road double the current width. I do not understand how this new development can go in without, at the very least, a secondary form of egress. Please do not gamble with my family, my two young kids. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for hearing me out. I drive the road between Del Dios, where I live, District 5.
I'm going to interrupt you real quick. Just if you could state your name for the record, please.
Stacy McLean.
Thank you so much.
I drive the road. It's wild land on both sides with vast tonnage of towering eucalyptus. Please vote no. The project flies in the face of the county government working for the people of our county. Please let the residents get out. It's not the right time. This is a project that doesn't reflect the current county fire perspective, and it's not the right place. West-traveling winds will push traffic this direction from the concrete jungle of most of Escondido. The roads going east will be clogged. You're accepting modeling versus decades of local knowledge and documented evacuation gridlock. This is not the right project. Two miles from services is more than a small stretch of what infill housing should be defined as.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then recalling Gregory White.
I did not ask his name.
Got you. Thank you, Greg. And then I'd like to invite forward Eric Bruvold, Shane Lauderdale, and Victor Gamble.
Eric Bruvold, San Diego North Economic Development Council. Thank you so much, Chairwoman and members of the board. You got our letter, and I'll just focus on two things that you've heard. First of all, we have a housing crisis in this region, and why? It's not that more complicated. If you look at the immediate area around this project, over the last decade, 16,000 net new jobs and only 5,000 net new homes. Three jobs chasing every one new home. And who gets hurt in that? Our working-class San Diegans, because they're the ones that get displaced as prices go up. Secondly, there was some talk that this isn't infill. I just want to make sure, if people don't know that region, we're less than five miles from CSUSM, less than six miles from the new Kaiser and Scripps Hospital, but it'll be adding a couple thousand jobs in total, and less than two miles from the San Diego, excuse me, the Escondido Auto Park. It fits the need for building homes near where jobs are. Thank you very much.
My name is Victoria Gamble. I'm a resident of Elfin Forest. It's great that I'm going after him because I wanted to talk about housing. The 2024 Housing Report shows that the county is well ahead of its regional housing needs assessment goals, with 84% of the state-mandated housing goals already met. With those goals almost met, amending the general plan to allow density over 2 and 1/2 times greater than the 174 currently allowed is unfounded, especially in light of the inherent hazards to the wider community posed by the plan. Entertaining GPA proposals to double or triple density for rural and semi-rural zone communities invites the type of caustic land speculation we have here. A GP-density project could have been done 10 years ago. Instead, because the county is open to such GPAs, entitled arbitratures open such sites seeking huge profits. They contort the planning and the decision-making process to get their way. Local communities get steamrolled or fight back. We fought back. Please don't sacrifice our lives for a P and L.
Thank you. And then recalling Shane Lauderdale. Not seeing Shane. We'll go to Tim Adams, Hannah McCafferty, and Stephen Abbott.
Tim Adams, thanks, Chair, Board members, for having me. My plea is for you to do the right thing. Applying the new CCFC and FPP guideline safety standards, consider IFC Section 501.1.2 2018, which added a powerful secondary access requirement for subdivisions on dead roads, adopted nationwide, including California. The code clearly applies to this project. Additionally, new fire protection plan preparation guidelines were unanimously approved by this board in 2024. PDS invited the town council to offer input, and most of the updates, especially about dead-end roads, stem from this danger posed by this project. But these updated codes and rules, are they mute? Like, per res judicata? Like, you guys sit below a crest that says, "The noblest motive is a public good." I ask that you do the right thing. You vote no on this project? Save lives. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Hannah McCafferty, resident of Elfin Forest with my husband and son, two horses, 18 chickens, a dog, and a cat. I wanted to again point out to you individually, we are here, we're not chanting the worn-out phrase, "Nimby, not in my backyard." This is about safety. This is about our lives. There are no sufficient roads to evacuate safely past the proposed project. There's nowhere to go. It doesn't matter if there's lanes out. You guys need to come visit. Come over, have lunch, I'll have you over, give you fresh eggs. Come visit us. We don't want to be burned in place. The fire chief stated that when we're sitting on the road and we can't get out, they would spray fire retardant on us. But guess what? Cars melt. We saw that in LA. Please, please, don't do that to us. Thank you.
And then again, Stephen Abbott. Not seeing Stephen. Okay. Go to Bob Deal, Kyle Noreen, and Dylan Noreen.
Good afternoon, Bob Deal. One of the other areas of concern for those of us in the red shirts is around temporary refuge capacity. The idea that thousands of evacuees would need urgent access to temporary refuge. The prominent fire researcher from the University of Utah, Dr. Thomas Kova, mentioned that there were no examples of this many refugees flowing into one location, and brought up five critical questions around capacity, transit time, handicap access, firefighter defense, and radiant heat. The county's experts' response to the professor's report were to dismiss those as general musings and to say that the rest are unknowns and would be dependent on a specific event scenario, so no further response required. So please, don't bet with our lives on a shoot from the hip.
Kyle Noreen, Dylan Noreen, Rowan Noreen. Okay, not, got it. No, not seeing them. Eric Jones, Aaron McKinley, and Richie Montez are the last three in-person speakers.
Chairman, Board of Supervisors, thanks for having me speak this morning, or this afternoon. My name's Eric Jones. I'm a 40-year resident of San Diego County, spent my entire career working in real estate development and real estate development consulting, mostly in master planning. I've looked at this master plan pretty extensively, and I've done a lot of master plans, including La Jolla Colony Master Plan over in UTC that was developed right next to the Rose Canyon, by the way, as well as Newport Coast Project up in Orange County that is developed around thousands of acres of open space. If that space is managed well, you're going to definitely take away the risk of a high fire most all the times. There's a lot of history that shows it does happen. It needs to be mitigated, managed properly. I think this developers, all developers do, they hire the best consultants they can. They work with the government agencies. You guys have your guidelines, your requirements that we all have to adhere to, and we do that, and we work with the best consultants we have, because we want a successful project, not just for us as a company, but for the people that are going to move into the communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erin McKinley. I'm a lifetime resident of San Diego County, and we require expert studies for a reason. They are experts. Individual people have their own opinions, but that does not void the efficacy of experts. I am not a fire expert, nor are most of the people speaking today. But the FPP was approved by the County Fire Authority, the Rancho Santa Fe Fire, and Cal Fire, and reviewed by the county sheriff, and a third-party reviewer, none of whom are paid consultants for the developer, nor am I. And this project has fire-hardened homes, automatic fire- fire-hardened homes, automatic fire sprinklers, fire-resistant materials, creates defensible space and brush management. It widens County Club Drive, constructs a new three-lane bridge over Escondido Creek, and most critically, increases water pressure for fire hydrants, which will benefit everyone in the community. This project is not making wildfires more prevalent nor more intense. It's actually creating a fire-managed area where one did not previously exist, providing less fuel and more defensible space. The project follows and passes every county-state code for fire safety. Those are facts.
Thank you.
Hi, dear Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Richie Montez, and I'm here to speak in support of Harmony Grove Village South. As someone who cares deeply about equity in our county, I urge you to take bold action on housing. The evidence is undeniable. In Elfin Forest, the average home price is 2.6 million, with lots averaging 4.4 acres. The result is a community that is overwhelmingly white, with almost no Hispanic or Asian families, and 0% black residents. These numbers are unacceptable. They demonstrate how communities that block middle-income and affordable housing effectively exclude people of color from homeownership opportunities, especially from living in single-family homes. When opponents claim that affordable housing will bring crimes, they are using coded language to keep certain families out. What affordable and middle-income housing really brings is opportunity, fairness, and diversity. I urge the Board to take this moment to send a strong message that San Diego County values inclusivity, and people of color deserve to live in every community, including those with single-family homes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we will hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it's your turn to speak, you will be unmuted. You will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Good afternoon. My name is Jenny Hawke, and I'm a resident of Elfin Forest. Thank you for the opportunity to share my comments. The developers' paid consultants have talked a lot today about fire safety improvements for the development. I don't doubt the houses themselves will be fire-safe, but what about the impact to Elfin Forest and other communities to the west? The consultants have noted that evacuees from Harmony Grove Village South will be required to travel north or east during wildfire events. The fires will come from the east, pushing evacuees west on Harmony Grove Road, a windy, unlit, two-lane road in a narrow valley surrounded by chaparral and eucalyptus tree groves. I ride my horses through this valley three times a week. It is bone-dry and highly flammable. My house is directly on Harmony Grove Road. It will become a parking lot. We will be trapped in our cars or forced to shelter in place, according to our own Fire Chief McQuade. The paid consultants have also talked about affordable housing. My fire insurance alone is $13,000 a year, not exactly affordable. With all the wildfire tragedies--
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
All aboard. To say that res judicata applies to an outdated seven-year-old EIR shows how desperate the developer is. Fire safety is of paramount importance, and this project does not satisfy any units for truly low-income people, maybe for families making up to 80% of the area median income. 30% is low income, so this not really gives them a, does not really give truly low-income people much of a chance. So much for equity. The developer needs to include more housing for truly low-income people. Not sure how a solar ray somewhere else will affect GH emissions. Waste order treatment facilities conditionally included. It isn't consistent with the community's character nor the end of par--
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Pathetic and telling to see how these people use the people-of-color card and exploiting them further. It's mind-blowing how even the people of color don't see it. But whatever. So you're pushing, con suelo here. You're pushing homes in a high-fire-risk area, ignoring concerns of the people who already live there. How convenient that wildfires are only treated as important when it serves corporate interests and the UN agenda, but dismissed when homeowners raise real safety concerns. It's just, ugh, there's so much. Repealing that EIR isn't transparency. It's a cover-up. And it's just like, what else did I put here? I have so much to say. 60 seconds. That's how much they care about what you have to say, people. Remember that. That's government, but yet we keep voting, right? Doing the same stupid thing over and over again. Anyways, what else? The EIR report exists to protect the public health--
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Hi, my name is Francis Arenas. I'm a resident of Harmony Grove Village. I'm a prior Marine Corps firefighter and a prior incident management officer for the Coast Guard. I wanted to address the Genesis evacuation system county emergency services will use to supposedly ensure an orderly and expeditious egress of residents from Harmony Grove and Keynes Valley. This system was proven to be full of bugs during the LA wildfires earlier this year, causing false alerts to be sent to 10 million LA residents, in addition to repeated and delayed follow-up alerts after the first alert was canceled. It was known to have processed incorrect evacuation data and known to have telecommunications issues. In short, the system doesn't work properly and would cause more harm than good. In addition to the enhanced fire risk and high potential of a gridlock posed by an additional 453 homes, this project is backed by a fraudulent nonprofit called the San Diego Housing Coalition, connected to a political consultant who has a felony grand theft conviction and has been paid by the developer of HGV South to promote this project. Potential buyers will not get home insurance and therefore will get denied.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Board. My name is Naomi Spector, and I'm a consumer class action litigation attorney, as well as a member, a resident of Elfin Forest. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I just want to briefly address a term, "res judicata," that was used during the department's recommendation of the project. Res judicata does not prevent the Board of Supervisors from being able to deny this project. The definition of res judicata is a matter that has been adjudicated by a competent court where the same parties seek to relitigate the same issues. That is not at all what's happening here today. Res judicata has no effect on the Board making decisions based on the review of county codes, the general plan, or the safety of their constituents. Furthermore, this is a discretionary project, meaning res judicata has no effect in any event because it can be rejected for any reason. And as you have heard, the fire safety risk assessment associated with Harmony Grove Village South in no way accounts for developments in the codes that have occurred--
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
This is Mike Wilson. I wanted to share, I won't repeat everything that's been said before, but I would like to say that I'd like you to vote no on the Harmony Grove Village South project, based on that access. Single-point fire is not a good thing. Redundancy is always a good thing, so that's my request, please.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Hi, my name is Phyllis Lederman. I live in Eden Valley, right next to one of the main corridors, Country Club Drive, as an access to get out in a fire. First of all, I question the affordability of this project, considering how much they will have to pay for fire insurance and top of a mortgage and homeowners association fees. Also, it is nowhere near mass transit, so not only will normal traffic be increased, but in case of a fire, it will impact all of us. Also, Vallecano, with 246 homes, will be going in soon in Eden Valley, and that will add to all more gridlock in case of a fire. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Go to our next caller.
Dear Supervisors, my name is Jing Shen. I live in Elfin Forest. I'm extremely concerned that this project will place Elfin Forest in direct danger. Without a secondary egress, residents will be trapped in the event of a wind-driven fire. One of the recent Los Angeles five victims told me in person how congested the road was and how hard it was to evacuate. When the next fire inevitably comes, residents will remember this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Good afternoon, Chair Lawson, Rimmer, members of the Board. This is Dan Silver, Endangered Capitán's League. Three reasons to deny. First, the GPA is not good planning. It's outside of villages, not convenient to transit. Developers should follow the general plan. Second, lack of basic secondary egress is a fatal flaw. The original evacuation standards are now obsolete. Third, in Palisades and Altadena, there is a relevant lesson. Unanticipated things go wrong. San Diego is no different. This is an inherently dangerous situation where development should be avoided. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
My name is Brad Thomas, resident in Harmony Grove Village. I can see the proposal of Harmony Grove Village South from my home. It is simply not plausible to think that the residents of this area, many whom assisted in voting you into the office that you sit, can safely evacuate when a fire happens next. This is simply not if, it is when. When this fire happens next and the people die, will you be able to look yourself in the mirror or lay your head down on your pillow at night, knowing that residents that trusted you to protect them were killed because of you? What do I tell my three- and five-year-olds when they ask, "Why are we being forced to sell our home?" I will tell them that five individuals chose money and greed over safety and common sense. What will you tell the children that lose their parents because of your decision? What will you tell the widow that loses their spouse because of your decision? Read the room. Read the comments. Read the reports. Come sit on my front porch with me and look at the immense fire risk. Come with me as we attempt to drive out of our neighborhood at 7:30 AM on a weekday. It is bumper-to-bumper, and this is a minute percentage of the population attempting to transit out of the neighborhood. I implore you to remember why you ran for office. I implore you to think of the children that will lose their parents--
Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hello, my name is Tori Gibbons. I'm an attorney for Elfin Forest Harmony Grove Town Council. Three quick points. The Board has full discretion to deny this project. Res judicata does not limit the Board's discretion and does not excuse the county from following its own code. And finally, the county has failed to follow the code requirements for vesting tentative map approvals. The county rescinded all of the project's previous entitlements, so the developer had submitted a new map, which triggers county code requirements to obtain and review the Fire Chief's recommendations regarding the project's compliance with current fire safety laws. This requirement is distinct from the county's secret analysis. Yet, as Fire Chief McQuade explained in his September 2025 letter, county staff never sought his review of the project. Instead, they continue to rely on the old evaluation made under outdated laws. This project cannot comply with the current state and local requirements. As Chief McQuade admitted in a recent community meeting, today you could not pass this project without secondary egress. Please deny the project. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Anetta Wilson, the Chair Lawson, Rimmer, and Supervisors and Staff, thank you. On behalf of my family that lives in Harmony Grove at the end of the dead-end Country Club Drive, please reject the Harmony Grove Village South as proposed. When evacuation is required, the traffic from this development will block them in. While the developer and supporters are thrilled about the things they have proposed for the development's new houses, none of those will help my family that already live there. Please support the people who voted for you and do the right thing. They need to have a second egress.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller. Our next caller is Truth. Your phone might be muted. Truth, can you hear us? Okay, we'll come back to you.
My name is Patrick Mollina. I'm a 40-year resident of Harmony Grove Village. I also will be trapped back behind the new village, and I'd just like to ask Honorable Chairperson Tara Lawson to remember when you took over from the incumbent and you pledged to fight corruption, greed, pollution, and stand up for children in your neighborhoods and for your constituents, I urge you to reject this plan. This is a plan that scares the daylights out of me. I feel like I'm going to have to sell my home that I plan to stay in for the rest of my life, and I'm going to move out immediately if this gets approved. I've been through seven fires here. I've evacuated with animals in my car. I've seen the traffic jams previously, even before Harmony Grove Village, and these open spaces that they promised in these developments. Take a look at the ones they put in Harmony Grove Village. The horse park we were supposed to get is a barren lot with some poles on it. The parks look like geriatric circles in--
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Most likely, the people don't want it, but your lobbyists do, so congratulations. I know you guys are going to go in and pass it, at least three of you, so. And you really don't care about anything that the people have to say.
Okay, we'll go to our next caller.
I'm Mike Whitmer. I'm a retired San Diego Sheriff's Lieutenant. I worked the area extensively during my career. I have planned evacuations. I have worked the evacuations on the ground, and I have found that people that are out of the area, from all the east, out of state, et cetera, are making these plans without knowing the area. And I'm telling you, Harmony Grove Country Club need to, if you're going to approve this, but I oppose it as it stands now. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Hi, Supervisors. This is Ed Gallows from Escondido. I've heard all the comments from all the professionals, and they supersede my comments by a long shot. It's a good project to be approved. Take the advice from your planning commission, who approved this 5-0, and that should be your charge. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller. And you know, that caller's not called in, so we'll go back to Truth and see if Truth is there, and if Truth isn't there, then that is going to end public comment for us.
Hey, Truth, this development should be called Cardenas Grove because the only group supporting this project is RCS Harmony's consultant and PPP's felony fraudster, he says Cardenas, fake San Diego Housing Coalition. Cardenas has grassroots resources that funneled money to progressives, also paid $10,000 to RCS Harmony Partners, the owners of Harmony Grove Village South. A sister still violating law and just racked up another $5,000 fine for ethics violations. Why would the county do business with a developer who employs a convicted felon whose violations were political and unethical? The housing coalition even paid for text message spam on the neighbors' phones. Anyone can read this information in a La Prinsa article entitled "Sham SD Nonprofit Supports Controversial Development." Shame developer David Kovak, who's been disrespectful to the neighbors, and also donated $30,000 to the Democratic Party supporting Taran Paloma. I do not-- I do not support this unmitigated fire hazard development that will only benefit corporate developers and their corrupt politicians they paid for. That's all this is. It's money, money, money. And no, Terra does not represent the people, never has, never will.
And Chair Lawson Raymer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. I first just want to thank everyone for being here and participating. I'm sure all my colleagues, as well as myself, have a lot of questions. I just want to note that over probably the last year or more, I've received thousands and thousands of comments on this item. Not just the 1,300 signatures that were recently delivered, but hundreds of letters. And the issues raised really were raised today again, which is sort of this intersection of the issues of housing and expanding access to housing and issues of fire risk and, and safety. I do have to say before we begin discussion, one thing that is incontrovertible, I mean, a lot of these questions are factual questions that we're going to, I think, have to really drill into. But I have spent time, I don't drive the roads very often. I prefer to bike them. I'm kind of a long-distance biker. And it is without a doubt, I'd say, kind of the entire neighborhood, especially Elfin Forest, is one of the most beautiful parts of San Diego County. It's gorgeous. It is special. And it's not just beautiful. There's a spiritual history. There's some spiritual retreats there that have, I think, become really central to, you know, our community's identity. So I think for me, one of the things I've really tried to do over the last few years in this process, I've been asked many, many times what I'm going to do and how I'm going to vote and whether I support or oppose this project. I've been invited to go to the site, all sorts of other things that I thought would potentially jeopardize my ability to, to vote on this important issue. Because I know that if you have stated your view ahead of time, then you're automatically recused as a conflict of interest. So I know I have not, I've been very careful to, to try to keep an open mind and show up here with, with an open mind, even though I've spent a lot of time in a community that's very, very beautiful and very special. So all that being said, that is not the question in front of us today. The question in front of us today is about Harmony Grove South in particular. So I have some questions, a lot of questions raised from the public testimony, but I don't want to monopolize. So if any of my colleagues have any questions, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it and appreciate everybody coming out and, and speaking today. This project was approved years ago and, and with specific reasons for its return. There was a lawsuit filed and it was understood that the greenhouse gas emissions and the affordable housing issues hadn't been addressed adequately. Those are the only two issues. I'm glad to see that those topics have been addressed and directed to the, by the Court of Appeal. But we do have a housing crisis. We do have that. And, but clearly, you know, the main concern of this project, we hear you, especially, you know, for the existing residents in the area, is fire evacuation and safety. Obviously. Although the court did uphold the original 2018 EIR with respect to fire safety, I'm going to need assurances from our experts. I'm not a fire expert, don't claim to be. I need assurances that the project being presented today in 2025 is still deemed safe. So I got, I got two questions. One, first of all, for the staff. I, I understand we can't make a project completely fireproof. I mean, that's impossible. But I want to be sure that the Harmony Grove Village South has adequately mitigated all the fire risks to the best of their ability and to the extent required by code. So one of the things that was brought up many, many, many times was the secondary access. And I understand there's a code that says, yes, there has to be secondary access. But if there isn't that possibility, or whatever the case may be, that alternatives can be, I don't know, proposed to mitigate that. So has this project adequately mitigated the secondary exit? Has, has, has that been satisfied?
Through the chair's supervisor, we'll start off and then introduce it to the Fire Chief. We'll complete this question.
I got a question for him after this, but go ahead.
Understood. So to tee that up, the, the answer is yes. Certainly, under SEQA, the project has mitigated for the impacts for fire under the fire protection plan. There was a comment today about wanting more measures than what is required. And in this project, there are more measures than what is required under code for the project. I'm going to go ahead and ask the chief if he would like to.
Can I, can I just follow up?
Yes, please.
Give me an example of a couple of these, I guess, mitigating things that you have been done to alleviate having to have a second access.
Examples would be increased fire protection distance around the community. So this project proposes more fire protection distance around the community than is required under code. Additional options or additional measures that are included in the project include increased parking to keep vehicles off the street. It has increased fire, increased water pressure in the systems. It has fire hydrants that are increased over the proximity or the ratio that is required for the project as well. It also widens and adds a bridge at the intersection of Country Club and Harmony Grove Road, where it now brings from an Arizona crossing up to a elevated bridge. That can also help with the water, you know, flowing under the creek as well for the environmental protection for the, for the water and the creek underneath. But also adds a third lane, bringing two lanes to egress out of the project out to Harmony Grove Road.
Okay, so before, so with, with all of those things, alleviates the necessity of a secondary access is what I'm hearing. And that's by code, that's by, you know, you didn't just make it up. But it's by code and, and that, though it's all legal.
Correct. In short, each project, each project and site conditions is unique. And so the code allows other measures and implementation to offset if there's the ability to practically put in a secondary access.
Okay, so for chief, is Ms. Dave McQuade? You're the Fire Chief of Rancho Santa Fe Fire Protection District. This is your turf, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so do the measures taken by the project adequately address the risks of fire and evacuation scenarios today in the proposed and in the surrounding community?
That is correct. All of those modifications that were applied to.
So that's a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the project is safe with those modifications that were applied to mitigate secondary egress.
Can I just remind folks that we need to not be disruptive? I want to make sure everyone can continue to participate in this meeting today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from anyone else? I can also just follow up, maybe a good jumping off point. I think, to me, there's a couple of issues on the table, right? One is the argument here really in favor of this project is the housing crisis and the issue around equity and access to middle-income housing. The argument against it is that it is the wrong project in the wrong place and that it poses a fire risk. So a severe, a severe one. What's not an issue for me is that it's an absolutely beautiful community because I've spent time there. So I feel like there's, I just really wanted to better understand this fire issue. So I have a bunch of questions, mostly based on the testimony from folks that were here today. There was one group, I think it was Group Six. Oh, no, Group Two. And they talked about how the evacuation plan is to go to Citricato, that it's a two-lane street and that also Harmony Grove is a two-lane street. And how on earth is everyone going to get out? Because this seems to really be focused on evacuation time. So I guess this for Chief McQuade.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, there is a network of roads that lead outside of the proposed project. One is Harmony Grove Road has two lanes. Harmony Grove Village Parkway has two lanes, plus it goes to a bridge within, connects to Citricato Parkway, which then can go north into the industrial Parkway of Escondido. And then goes also up to West Valley Parkway, also leads you into Escondido. Country Club also leads up north, tees into Auto Parkway, can also go through Corporate into Myers and end up on Barham. So that entire network gets us options to evacuate the residents from there.
Let me just be clear, though. My question's really about the concern raised that it's only two lanes and that they showed us a model that looked like evacuation, I don't know. I've got a little, this looked like it was either between four and seven hours to evacuate people. So that was what I wanted to better understand, you know, is what have we done to look at evacuation times? Because what I've heard from a lot of people is, okay, like, just to summarize, the core of what I've heard is, people aren't saying that they're worried that the specific development is not like adequately mitigated and fireproofed. Though what I'm hearing is that people are saying that they're worried about the secondary effects on the surrounding community, on Elfin Forest, on existing Harmony Grove development. Like, what does this do to people's ability to evacuate? Like, the people that actually currently live there, not like future people who don't live there. So that was what I, that's my concern. It's my community. Like, I want to understand, like, are, I just need to better understand the analysis. I know you have said here that it's safe. I've saw the staff recommendation, but I feel like I need you to really dive into this for me.
So based on the current and expected fire behavior, if we were to have an incident, and the location and what those impacts are going to be, we would utilize what we call Genesis Evac, which is our new system that allows us to systematically evacuate residents from any area that this fire would be impacting. So it gives us a systematic approach from fire and law enforcement to create an evacuation plan.
But what about this, the model that we saw that says it would be like four to seven hours to evacuate?
I'm not familiar with the timing of four to seven hours. I know what our tools allow us to do to move residents and evacuate them.
So can you talk to me a little bit, let's, I know, a little bit more about like Elfin Forest, for example? You know, the folks who've dealt with a lot of fires before. You know, how do, what is your modeling or what does your analysis indicate in terms of the impact on the existing communities? In terms of their fire, the risk of fire it poses to them?
So our pre-planning model today for if we were to have a fire out in Elfin Forest or Harmony Grove area, Elfin Forest in our plan would be to move them towards Santa Lejo, which then gets them into an urban area. Between Elfin Forest and Harmony Grove is more of a rural area and there's a canyon that kind of goes through that location. So we would expect more increase in fire behavior. So we would not push people through that corridor. It's almost like looking at an hourglass. Those that live in Harmony Grove, then we would move them into the city of Escondido. And then that's how that plan would work. So nobody would actually be in what we used to call the 9,000 block of Harmony Grove because there's no viable area in there to be safe if there is an increase in fire behavior.
So you're basically saying some folks would go, folks from Elfin Forest would go one way and the folks from Harmony Grove South would go the opposite way?
That is correct.
Okay. Can we, I mean, I'm, I hear from the audience, it is, it was my original question. Like, what about the fact that it's a two-lane road?
Elfin Forest and Harmony Grove, yes, those are currently a one-way road each, or one lane each way. So it is a two-lane road, correct?
But I think that's my question, right? I mean, again, I just want to, you know, the core issue here is like, are folks going to be safe if there's a fire? Because I think we know there will at some point be a fire. So how, I mean, you've done this analysis, you've recommended this project, but I feel like I really need to understand, like, what, how would that work if it's a two-lane road to get folks out?
So the plan, as I had mentioned, the folks that live in Elfin Forest, their closest resource of urban development is going to be Santa Lejo going into Carlsbad. That is their next-door neighbor. So that's the way we would push them.
Could you repeat that one more time?
The Elfin, the Elfin Forest community, so the, the west side, we would push them into Santa Lejo and into Carlsbad, which is an urban area. So that's where that portion of the community would go to. Then on the east side, where Harmony Grove is, that would be pushed into the city of Escondido to evacuate those residents.
Okay.
So Elfin Forest would never, they would not be pushed towards Harmony Grove in that direction because that's a long, a long distance.
Madam Chair, I'm so sorry to interrupt a point of order. We've spent many hours hearing from the public, both in favor and against. And now it's our time to hear from the staff and experts. So I would just request that people not make noise because we're, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And I've already asked everyone once to try to be quiet. So this is now your official warning. So if there's any more disruption that continues, I'm going to have to ask everyone to leave the chamber. So please, let's not get there. Thank you. Okay, continue.
My apologies. So the fact that we could, you know, it was stated in the fire protection plan that for Harmony Grove, could we evacuate everybody out of there within an hour? That is how we utilize this Genesis Evac system, is that we would systematically move each community in a systematic approach. So we wouldn't end up with massive gridlock. We do understand that, like Eden Valley, they have a large horse community out there. And for that purpose, that northern part of Country Club, we would almost today pre-plan it as to, we would give them Country Club because they have so many complexities in trying to get their horses evacuated out of there and not create an additional issue. And so we would push more folks out onto Harmony Grove Village Parkway, out onto Citricato.
Sorry, I missed what you said. You said, what is the, you're, in your evacuation scenario, of how many hours will it take to evacuate everybody?
Roughly about one to two hours.
Okay, one to two hours, lot less bad than four to seven, but, okay. I guess, just to kind of continue on, and please, if my colleagues want to interject or ask any additional questions, I've just taken notes from all the presentations. There was a kind of a conversation and I thought it was really, like, it moved me and it really hit me. Kind of talking about the Cedar Fire, the Campfire Fire, the Paradise Fire, which is really a terrifying specter for our community. And, you know, those are sort of worst-case scenarios, but I, you know, I remember even the Scripps Ranch Fire, right? So fires is something I take really seriously. I think we all do on this board. So I, I guess I'm just, wanted to better understand, again, because, you know, I know you've said it's, you think this project's safe, but like, why? As a board who's not fire experts, as my colleague supervisor does, I mentioned, like, why doesn't Harmony Grove South present the same dangers as sort of those three major catastrophes did?
All the modifications that were presented for this project is what sets it up for success. The fact that they're increasing the fuel modification zones. They're doing the 7A construction for the structures themselves. They're providing sprinkler systems for the structures. They're increasing the number of hydrants, the increase in water flow from 2,500 to 5,000 gallons. All of these components start to have a synergistic effect of creating a successful plan for the community. And when we talk about evacuation, that is a primary plan. Can we get people evacuated out of there? But before we start to evacuate, what did we do to set them up for success for their own residents? Are they going to be able to come to a home? And can they potentially be used to stay there as a shelter-in-place component? Meaning as an act, fire and law enforcement may require residents to stay in place, what we call a shelter-in-place. So each one of these components that is implemented into the fire protection plan is setting this project up for success.
I guess that leads to my next question, which has come up. Another of the presentations, I think it was Group Eight, talked about secondary access road and asked if that was needed. That's come up a lot. That's been kind of a reiterating issue. I mean, I've looked at the maps. I've seen Johnson Road. I saw the, the map of the boulder in the middle of the road. So, you know, I've been, I'm trying to better understand this. I guess the core issue or question I have is, why do you not think we need a secondary access road? Like, why do we think this is safe without one?
With the project, the way it was looked at, so both Cal Fire, County Fire Authority, and our district, Rancho Santa Fe Fire Protection District, all looked at the project as it was presented. It was clearly identified after eight individual options that could have been used for secondary egress were infeasible for whatever reasons that they came across with on each one of those. So the modifications, so yes, the code says that the fire authority having jurisdiction can require secondary egress. Well, that's what they tried, eight different separate locations, and it was infeasible. The next component to that is it allows the fire authority to use modifications. And for all these modifications that they put into place, that's what they were using to mitigate the lack of secondary egress. mitigate the lack of secondary egress. The component that really comes into play here, and when I was operations with the, the district, was the fact that this bridge is going in with this project. It's three lanes, it's two for egress, one for emergency access. It eliminates the Arizona Crossing. This project with this bridge also alleviates some of the issues that we've encountered over the last 10 years, since the Rancho Santa Fe Fire Protection District took over this location. It's hard to believe, but we do get rain in Southern California. And when we first took over Elfin Forest and Harmony Grove, we had four swift water rescues for those folks that decided to go around the signage, not turn around and don't drown, they actually drove through the flooded waters. So that means my personnel have to get in the water and facilitate a rescue. The bridge also, at the same time, when it's flooded, also gives us access to the community that already exists out there. If there is a fire, if there is a medical aid, and it's flooded, I can't get apparatus over there, there's no access point. So the bridge is almost twofold, gives me access when I need it all season, but it also provides two means of egress, those lanes, and that's where this is coming into play. And then it allows us access for resources to come into the development during a fire.
So you're basically saying, you don't think you need a secondary road, because you have two lanes instead of, two lanes to get out instead of one, and a bridge?
Shortest distance, clear direction for those that need to evacuate, that is correct.
Uh, I want to, I don't want to, again, I probably have a lot more questions, because I've been hearing about this for a long time. I don't want to, I do want, I see my colleagues have their hands in the queue. I just want to ask one question, well, I'm sure I'll have more after everyone else talks, but I think my core question, Chief McQuaid, and I think there was another fire person, fire expert person who came to testify in the group, this guy, fire expert person? I guess for both of you, like, both of you are fire experts, and I, you know, I'll say, I was, um, I have very little emergency experience, right? But I was a trained EMT for a while. And I know, the experience of being trained as an EMT showed me how little I knew, right? That there's like an expertise that I didn't have, and I, I saw a window into that, because I knew what I did know, and my, sort of my scope of practice is an, is an EMT, which was significantly less than the scope of practice as a paramedic, which is less than a doctor, and very, much less than a fire chief. So I know what I don't know. But the thing I just want to ask both of you, as we like sit here today in front of a, like, a roomful of people who have housing, houses and kids and families in this community, I'll ask you first, then I want to ask you, like, would you live in Harmony Grove South? And would you live in Elfin Forest, given the fire risk that may or may not be created by this project? Would you live there with your family?
Great question, and that's a yes. Confident yes.
Confident yes. Okay, sir?
So, so I've actually written two op-ed pieces where I publicly stated, I personally would not move my family into a high or very high fire severity zone in California unless it was in a master planned community built to Chapter 7A, Chapter 49, and all the requirements that are here. Now, this project had the modification that was made, so in my due diligence, I met with Chief McQuaid, who I'd never met before, to, to go over what the considerations were for the altered method it means. I also met with your county fire chief from Cal Fire, who used to work for me. So he was pretty honest with me, and we went through those, and I was satisfied that they had reached the right decision, and I, you know, agree with the decision they made.
Thank you. Okay, again, I should share the floor, so Vice Chair Montgomery, step.
I'll be, I'll be fairly brief, hopefully. I want to thank every, everyone for not only being here today, but over the course of, I think, close to a decade, for your advocacy, and I'm, you know, coming in sort of at the end, and not, don't necessarily have any even neighboring districts or neighborhoods, but, you know, it has been really interesting to go through this process. I, I do, my question in general focus is around the conversation of the secondary evacuation routes, and those that have been tested, the eight roads, I think that, that have been discussed in the reports in here today, and how, I think Johnson Road has continued to kind of elevate itself above some of the other roads. And so, in, 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 the feasibility is an interesting word, right? Because if something's not feasible, it means it's probably not practical, but not, that, not that it's not impossible. And I think, for me, making that distinction is very, very important. I, I do think in no, in experiencing, we're experiencing a lot of brain drain in our county, people are leaving, we're dealt with, we have to deal with that every day as elected officials across the region. Housing is very, very important, people do want the opportunity to live here, to have a stake in the county, to own, to, to rent a, a place that is decent and nice. So I definitely understand that, but I think as we, you know, continue to build out, that there's additional responsibility. And I think the major additional responsibility here is that secondary evacuation route. I just believe that. And so my question is, with regard to feasibility, what specifically, did those, did that study particularly for Johnson Road look like? I think it's Road, is it John, it's, I know it's Johnston, Johnston Road, not, not Avenue or anything else, yes. What did it, what were the steps that took place for that evaluation to, to find that it was infeasible? And then how would we then, maybe even as a county, be able to act to make it a possibility?
Through the chair, Vice Chair, I will start that and ask my colleagues for help on answering it. Johnston Road is a good illustrative example of the eight roads that were looked at, and part of the question that was phrased is, why would it not be practical or feasible? Johnston Road goes through a, a high-fuel area that goes up slopes of 20% to exit out toward the city of Escondido. It's also a road that the fire chief would describe as mid-slope, indicating that you have fuel below and above. So for that road, it would require significant engineering, and then sending people out a route that they would not typically be using. I'm going to pause there and let the fire chief continue. He has a good analogy of what happens during a fire when people are thinking day-to-day, how they come and go from a community.
So the use of Johnson Road as a secondary, currently today, it's barely a mountain bike trail, so it would take a lot of development. But yeah, it is mid-slope, it has fuels up on top and below it, that could put a lot of danger in that. Also, on the east end of Johnston is a gate, so that brings complexities to an evacuation plan also. The other component is residents, all of us, we have our typical routes, we go to the grocery store, we go to the schools when we drop off our kids, we go to work, and we have like a, a pattern that we always follow. If you don't go out a secondary egress or this Johnston Road, and this is the first time you're going to be using this, because we're using it as a secondary egress, this is like when you go to the movie theater. You walk through the front door, you get your popcorn, and you go sit down. Now there's an incident inside that movie theater. Most, most folks, human behavior, will backtrack the exact same way they came in, because that's what they're familiar with. Nobody ever really paid attention to the two exit signs at the very bottom of a movie theater. So those are those types of things. So for the first time, if they were to be moved out on Johnston Road, it's going to add complexities to them, it's going to add more angst to them, because they've never actually practiced using that secondary egress. That's where the bridge with the three lanes, having two means of egress, that's what they've been using day in and day out when they leave their home, to go out and do normal life things and come back. So to keep that consistency of their knowledge, that helps ensure their safety. Thank you.
I, and I appreciate that, thank you. And, and I also have acknowledged and will acknowledge now the mitigation efforts that have gone into this project. I will say that hearing from this community, they're, they're very well aware, because of the severity and the frequency, I think, of, of fires in the area, and the, you know, knowing that, that it's a bit more possible than maybe other areas, that the, the level of awareness is heightened, which might, you know, also contribute to the behavior when a fire happens. It's, it's, it seems to be an area that is very well aware that that could happen consistently. And so maybe, you know, the way that they would respond is, is different from, you know, folks that are not experiencing this or do not have to worry about it as much, right? So I would say, I, I understand, and you're certainly not entirely wrong, but I would definitely feel more comfortable doing more of a deep dive into the possibility of that engineering, that cost, and, and having this board look at that as well. Oh, I, I would say I support, I, I do, you know, based on the entirety of the county needs, I understand why this project is here, moving forward, it's been through a lot of processes, as Supervisor Desmond said. I would just like to see us do additional work around that road, a secondary access, even if it's separate and apart from the actual approval. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond?
Well, thank you, appreciate it. All right, we've got our sheriff, sitting, or Deputy Sheriff, sitting here, and from my experience, you know, as Mayor San Marcos watching many of these fires, firefighters are fighting it, and, and the sheriffs are out doing the evacuations. You're at the evacuation point, so do you, can you weigh in on the, what, what you've seen, what's being presented, if you think the evacuations are feasible to, for the safety of this neighborhood? And the surrounding neighborhood?
Through the chair, Supervisor Desmond. Yeah, my name is Glenn Twyman, and my original position when I started this was the emergency planning detail, which oversees our disaster preparedness, and we focus a lot on wildfires. Part of that position also, I was the co-chair of the county's evacuation committee, which is under the UDC, so. Yes, I've reviewed this plan, and since 2018, I know the courts have affirmed it and stuff like that. Some things I will say that have changed is, we have made a lot of progress. Just in the way that fire and law enforcement operate on fires now, we're normally in unified command, so we're making decisions together. Part of those improvements has also been Genesis Evac, that's the evacuation software that the, the entire county has adopted. One of those things, if I could have the staff to help maybe explain that a little, if they could put up Slide 103 for me, I'd appreciate it. So just a, a quick thing, before, or, before we started this about a year ago, we used old, what they called the public safety grid. Those were just a bunch of squares that were overlaid over a map, and that's how we identified who we were going to evacuate. It was a big paper book, like, for those of us who've been around, Thomas Brothers. Now we've kind of got into the digital age, so where we use a zone-based map, and you can clearly see that the zones are lined out, they take in a lot more than just a square, they take in roads, natural barriers such as rivers and streams, population density, threats. So for instance, all of the major campuses are their own zone, so you can put shelter in place and notify for other events as active shooter and stuff. So this new mapping system is really kind of brought forth and given us the ability to do evacuations better. It also allows us to stagger evacuations. Instead of sending out a big blanket message to everybody saying, jump in your cars and leave, each zone can have its own message, so we can tell certain zones, excuse me, certain zones to go to the north, or to take certain roads, or to go to the south and take certain roads. So we can really customize that. One of the comments from there was about evacuating that many people. The software also allows us to pre-identify shelters, temporary evacuation points, making it easier, where back in the day, we would have to just go, what's the closest, where can we go? In conjunction with other county entities, we're able to identify those and actually put them on the map so they're pre-approved. So the software has really given us a lot of flexibility to create a plan. Another thing is the high-low siren. Door-to-door, we used to go to door and knock on doors. So covering a large area is, takes a lot of personnel to do that. So in the state of California, now there's, all law enforcement agencies have to have the high-low siren. So when we, basically, there's a little term, when you hear high-low, it's time to go. So we can cover a very, very large area with a high-low siren, giving as much notice even before these announcements are out, or produced through the software, we can get deputies on scene and start providing those audible notifications. Our newest patrol cars also have a recorded message saying that they need to evacuate, there's a hazard, and that they need to leave as soon as possible. So that's something else that we also have that wasn't around for the Coco's Fire and some of those other incidents that people are talking about. And we still have the wire emergency alert, which is basically where we send out our cell phone, and we just cover, even if you're a visitor, you're driving through the area, you get that notification. So there's multiple layers of notification, we just don't rely on one. If it's a bigger incident, we can also use AM radio. So we have a lot of tools about, at our disposal. As far as evacuating people on the roadway, being two lanes, we can also control traffic. I heard one person say about Halloween, well, there was probably, the lights were on their normal cycle, so traffic was backing up because of a red light, added cars. We have the availability to reach out to our partners in Escondido PD, have them start helping us direct traffic, and be able to try to keep that flow going in all those areas that we want to move traffic. I hope I answered your question.
Wow, you were ready for that question. Geez, I appreciate, hey, this high-low, this siren, it's the first time I've heard of it, so.
We need to step up county as far as getting information out there. I, I had never heard of that before, that high-low means to go. But I do have one more, just a follow-up, that, I, when I visited the site, I saw Johnson Road, and it's, it's a dirt path, it's not a road, it's, it's just like a car tried to go through there many years ago, and it's a dirt ruts, and there's rocks and everything, and quite frankly, that, that road is, to me, I kind of understand now, you wouldn't want to evacuate on it, because there's fuel on both sides, you want to get people into the urban areas as quickly as possible, on, on that road. But, so I'm going to go out on a limb here, given staff's recommendation and the court's review, the EIR, and the approval of the planning commission, and most importantly, our experts' advice and their testimony today. You know, we, we can't fireproof an area, but I think we can mitigate it to the best we can, so I'm going to move to approve the project as option one, consistent with the recommendation of today's board letter. It's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have Supervisor Gary, is her hand, the cue to speak. Chair Protem?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. My question's around defensible spaces, and who manages, you know, the, the brush, the fuel, can you speak to that? Who's responsible for that?
Through the chair. Great question. So first thing that'll happen is the developers got to create the defensible space. Then the responsibility will be passed on to the homeowners association as part of their rules. The checkup on that is then put on us as the fire district to go out there and do the annual inspection, making sure that they're compliant.
So it's on an annual basis?
That is correct.
And if they don't comply, what happens?
They are written up and addressed sternly, because they are part of the community's safety, and if we still don't get compliance, worst-case scenario is I have to go get an administrative warrant to make it happen.
Does it have to be on an annual basis?
It does not have to be on an annual basis, yeah. We have weed abatement inspectors that are constantly moving throughout the district, so most likely, those weed abatement inspectors are going to be driving past that property, so it's not going to be just an annual, you know, one-time look at it. If we see it sooner, or an issue sooner, we address it sooner.
But could the requirement be on a more frequent basis?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay. And then my other question's regarding the water supply and water pressure, right? This, this plan work, well, you, you stated it works because of the modifications, you know, in the, in the absence of a secondary road. How do we ensure that there's enough water pressure? And that has to do with water supply. So do we have enough water supply, and who's supplying the water? Because once the emergency happens, then, you know, we need to make sure it's insured.
So that's a, great question. One of the things that we, obviously with the fires that happened up in LA in January, that was a huge question, what happened with the water supply? What, you know, there's no more water in the fire hydrants, all those components. So that drove us to our questions as the fire authorities, because we need the water. And so we know that there's that relationship that we have to have with our water authorities. So we actually did several town hall meetings in Rancho Santa Fe, where we actually invited San Diego County Water Authority, Leavenhein Water District, Santa Fe San Diego County Water Authority, Leavenhein Water District, Santa Fe Irrigation District. RingCon was invited, but they couldn't make it. But the whole point was to actually show how, as we in the fire service work automatic aid, they also have their own networking system where they can actually supply and back each other up if there is a issue with water compliance on that. So, it was a great networking system that they have, and that's what they have told us, is that they have great water supply and they can move it to where it is needed.
Okay. Thank you. My last question has to do with the Genesis system, evac system. You talked about the staggered evacuation, right, and cutting down the evacuation times to, I think you guys said, one to two hours, which makes sense. And then you talked about the high-low siren and all of that, but how do you ensure that people are evacuating when it's their turn and not preemptively or too early, which could create gridlock?
Well, I can't. Everybody, we give our best recommendation, and we try to give people as much notice as we can, the public, to be able to be safe and give them a safe route to get out. And that's what we find with these, a majority of these evacuations throughout the entire state, is a lot of people kind of want to wait. So, if we, they have two hours and they could leave, they kind of want to wait till it comes over the ridge, or till they can see it, or their neighbor says it's time to go, "Going to wait for my neighbor." So, it's kind of a, it's kind of a triangle that between fire, law, we need the cooperation of the community when they're told to go, to leave on time. And a lot of the deaths in California have been people that have decided to stay till the very end, and then they get caught, they get caught up in that. So, the only thing I could say is, law enforcement can't force anybody to leave their property. That's why we try to give as much notice as we can, to give them their opportunities to gather their items and proceed out safely.
And I'm sorry, I think you didn't understand my question. So, what I was talking about is, how do you prevent people evacuating too early? Because that could create gridlock.
I can't prevent anybody from evacuating early. You could hear a fire's 10 miles away and decide to evacuate. So, I have no control of that. Like I say, through our messaging, we also have social media. We can try to put out that message if that was a case that we felt that we didn't need people to evacuate. And we also could use that temporarily, either a shelter in place to hold those people or to ask them to stay there. But even if we ask somebody to shelter in place, if they choose that they want to leave, we can't stop them from leaving.
Okay.
We do have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Desmond. Seeing no comments from anyone, I actually do have a question of the developer. He's still here. That would be great, if you could come up.
I think it's, for me, it really is the same question I ask the fire chiefs, right? Like, I think, I am very firmly committed to the principle that we need more access to housing in this community in San Diego County, that people, that there is very little to no available middle-income housing. I appreciate the effort that you've made with the 10%, the 45 units that will be, like, you know, low income or moderate income. I also, you know, I'm pretty familiar with the community, and based on the, you know, size of the homes you're building, you know, and kind of the comps nearby, it looks like those houses are going to be about, you know, 850, sort of, that's the range, which, knowing what the rest of the neighborhood sells for, which is more like two, you know, 850 is much better than two. So, I appreciate, I acknowledge all that, and I think it's really...
I agree with that.
You agree with my estimate that you think you'll sell your...
No, I'm just...
Yeah, I mean, I'm no real estate expert, but I can look at Redfin. So, all that's good, you know, that's important. And we talk all the time on this board about importance of housing and how we need to do more for housing, especially for first-time homebuyers and entry-level housing. And these are exactly the kind of houses we talk about all the time. We talk about townhomes, we talk about houses that, like, allow first-time homebuyers to get their foot in the market. I know this is an amazing community, because it's mine, it has great schools, really close to jobs. People talked a lot about jobs, but as a mom of a six-year-old, I'm real focused on schools. It's really good schools. So, all of the things that are important to me, when you think about where you want to create access to, for first-time homebuyers and sort of newer market entrance for middle-class housing. So, I hear you, I appreciate that, and I know how hard you've worked. The question I have, though, is like, every checkbox we check on a piece of paper, you know, every permit or hurdle we hurdle, all of those are necessary but not sufficient. Like, the core question I have for you is, like, would you live here? Would you feel safe? And would you live in Elfin Forest once this new development goes? Would you put your own family there?
Well, it's, there's a couple parts to that. If I may answer it, just start globally and get there quickly. Chair, thank you for the opportunity. I've been in this business more than 40 years, and I've been a master planner and builder, and I've been through the cycles of it. I remember in the early 90s when it was a big deal to just do fuel mod, right? And we would watch it when we'd build a community, and you think, "Gosh, we're going to, we're going to clear 100 or 200 feet. What good is that going to do?" And the fires would come up the canyon, and they'd stop. And it was like, "Wow, man, that's amazing." And then in 2008, with the Chapter 7A, two things happened. The fire sort of stops on the sides, and then there's embers, right? And so, the Chapter 7A is to create the, close the embers, so the buildings don't burn. So, you've got the fire stopped on the outside, fire stopped on the inside. That's what makes them safe. And so, it's distinguished between new communities and existing communities. And I think there's challenge within existing communities. So, I'm asking you, are you asking, would we, would I live in Harmony Grove Village South or some of the older communities? Is that...
Yeah, just to clarify, I'm asking, would you live in Harmony Grove South? That's my first question. And would you also live in Elfin Forest, I think specifically, like, where a lot of the concerns are coming from, and once this development goes up?
Yeah, without question, I would live in Harmony Grove Village South for the reasons that we've said. The exterior fuel mod and the interior protections, it's as good as it gets. It's as protected as it can be. The whole area is a little challenging for me, because Elfin Forest, as someone was pointing out earlier, it's really seven miles away, and there's a way for Harmony Grove to go out one mile. So, it strikes me with my experience, and I'm no expert either, but just being in the business this long, it feels like Elfin wants to go toward the coast, right? That's their primary evacuation route. And then in Harmony Grove, it's really to the east, and then you have the current protections. So, I, under the assumption, I guess I would say this, I would live in Elfin Forest if we could dial up all of the protections to current standards, right? If you could do the fuel modification and get the buildings up to a standard, and the assumption that you would evacuate to the west? Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
That makes sense.
There is a motion on the floor currently from Supervisor Desmond. Is there, anyone have any, sorry, well, you know, we're at some point going to have to vote, so either someone's going to have to second your motion or make a substitute motion. You'd like to second the motion?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion on the motion on the floor at this time? Is there a substitute motion?
I would like to suggest, if Supervisor Desmond is amenable, I would like to see more frequency in the defensible spaces clearing that we were talking about with the HOA, what they're required to do on an annual basis. I think we need to have that at a much more frequent basis, so biannually at least.
What is it now?
Annually.
Chief votes? Whatever.
If we, if it would be helpful, through the chair supervisor, currently, it's annual for the fuel modification, and our understanding is, what this would do is require the fuel modification to essentially happen twice a year. This could be done through a third-party certification from the property, the HOA submitting evidence of it being done twice a year to ensure that it's being done. If it is not being done to that frequency, both the local fire district and the county have enforcement tools to help assist to ensure that it gets done.
Well, and I have, I have no problem with that. I'm just kind of curious, though, it's like, it would seem like before fire season would be the time to do it, and then, I guess, maybe mid-fire season or something like that? I'm just...
Apologies.
It grows, you know, when it rains, which is not fire season.
Apologies, my confusion. Yes, many communities, HOAs, and property owners clear the property multiple times throughout the year. There's no reason to think that this property owner would not. The way I understood that was, what would be the frequency for an inspection to ensure that it occurs, a check and balance? And so, if currently, there's a check going into a place once a year to ensure that it's being done through the fire district, if there was interest in placing a condition on the project to ensure a minimum of a second time a year that there is a third-party certifying and attesting that the clearing has been done, that could be submitted to the county as a condition of the project. For a property owner, the HOA, they could certainly do it as many times a year as they want, as many do currently.
The inspection, biennial inspection. So, whether they do it on a biennial basis, to clear the brush or whatever, I think that's...
I'd be amenable to that.
It's important for us to require it. I think that whether they do it or don't do it, whether it grows, or whether it rains, it doesn't matter. I think requiring it is what we need to do.
Okay. I'm willing to accept that, and I guess, is that a condition we can put on the applicant? Okay.
Just want to confirm with legal, and I guess with the staff team, that that's a legal, that's allowed. Okay. So, there's now a motion on the floor. Supervisor Anderson, you're the seconder, so you would have to accept that amendment from...
I'm happy to do it.
Chair Protim. Do you have a written one? Do you want to share? Okay, go ahead. Okay, so, that is an amendment to Supervisor Desmond's motion that was seconded by Supervisor Anderson. So, that's clear. Supervisor Desmond?
I just want to make sure, I get biennial and biannual mixed up sometimes.
Biennial is every other year.
Is every two years.
Biannual, yeah. Biennial is every other, biannual is twice a year.
There's a request, okay. I just want to make sure we're doing, huh?
Yes.
Okay, so, Supervisor Montgomery, step.
I'm going to throw this out there for the maker of the motion, and that's around the, I'm going to go back to the secondary access. I am not, I think that, again, that I see a lot of the mitigation efforts, understand I also, I just, you know, it's hard to imagine not at least trying a bit more around what I think could be a good solution, even though I know that there are a lot of different efforts involved. So, I would ask that we direct the CIO to come back with those additional options, or at least more detail as to how the infeasibility result came about, to see if we could make a road practical for secondary access for this area. I would just say, like, all the roads that we drive on right now, we're dirt, so that's not, I mean, this is why we go and evaluate and build or not build, so that's really not a way out. But I just want to, I want to put it out there, understanding the importance of this project.
Can I just clarify, just so I understand, that, Supervisor Montgomery, step, because this has already been, you know, considered by the board, we couldn't require that as a condition of project approval, but that would be...
No.
So, you're not, your amendment is not to, or you propose amendment for consideration, not to acquire, this is a condition...
No, I think at this point, I'm not legally comfortable doing that, but also, as a county, I do think that we have a responsibility.
So, just, I think, to clarify then, from my own understanding, so that your motion is to ask, I guess, a friendly amendment to approve the project with this modification as indicated by Supervisor Gary, and also direct the CIO to explore options regarding secondary access and report back to the board?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
To be a part of the motion.
Okay.
I don't mind that, but I guess if we approve the project as is, we don't have...
It would come back to us, for us to pay for it as a county, if we decide to do so, just to be clear.
Oh, okay. Where's that money? Okay.
I hear on this dice all the time, you know...
I know.
I don't represent, you know, a huge part of unincorporated areas. There are supervisors that do. I hear about it all the time, I'm just putting it out there, but, you know...
Okay, but that wouldn't be any onus, I guess, on the applicant, that would be on us.
Legally, there could not be.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay, so, we have, Supervisor Desmond has accepted that. Supervisor Anderson?
I happily second.
Okay, you're still seconding.
Whatever, whatever the amendments are, moving forward.
Okay. I want to say I appreciate that, I appreciate that idea. Supervisor Montgomery, step, I think it is very wise, and I would very much appreciate that as well. So, we've got a motion on the floor by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Anderson, to approve the staff recommendation with the two friendly amendments offered by Supervisor Gary and Supervisor Montgomery, step. Please vote.
And Chair Lawson, remember, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
We have an adjournment. Okay, for my colleagues, we have an adjournment in memory still. Supervisor Desmond, are you prepared for adjournment in memory?
I'll wait just a minute for the crowd. Hey, folks, we still got business.
Give them a moment.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to adjourn our meeting in memory of fire engineer Rob Hager, North County Fire Protection District, in conjunction with the Fallbrook Firefighters Association, Local 1622, mourns the tragic loss of engineer Rob Hager, who passed away unexpectedly in his home on September 15th. He was 42 years old, and though his passing did not occur while in the line of duty, his absence is deeply felt by those who worked with him and knew him. Following in his grandfather's footsteps, Rob began education and training to become a firefighter at a very young age. Engineer Hager began his service with North County Fire in 2008 as a reserve firefighter, and then became a full-time firefighter in 2012. His unwavering dedication, compassion, and professionalism touched countless lives throughout the county and beyond. Rob's care for others and love for fire service will be remembered always. So, we extend our heartfelt condolences to the Hager family, to North County Fire, and the Fallbrook Firefighters Association, Local 1622, in honor of his memory and service and the lasting impact he has made. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
The next regular meeting of the board will take place on October 21st.